All right, the time is now six o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular Galt City Council meeting for Tuesday, August the 17th. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to now ask our city manager, Mr. Hines, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the governor's executive order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit, unless that same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take the live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter their webinar, into the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to raise their hand or use the raise their hand option in the option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do at in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. However, doing so is not required. Attendees should also see the lower-hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments on this particular issue.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Hubert, can you please do a roll call?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everybody. Ms. Hubert, if you would like to read the replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned at webcast at www.zacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, we have agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from council? Nothing? Okay. We'll now move on to item C, public comment. Do we have any written comment this evening?
You want me to go ahead and read it?
Sure.
Okay. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US02web.zoom.us forward slash J forward slash eight four one six three two zero five three nine three. Webinar ID eight four one six three two zero five three nine three. And I do not have any written public comments.
Okay. Rose, do we have any hands raised online for comment?
Yes, we have two hands raised. The first individual will be Tim Reed.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Go ahead and unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I come to you tonight to discuss the need for increased traffic safety within our community. The City of Galt Police Department and officers face numerous competing demands that include dealing with significant issues such as violent crime, property theft, and assault. Given the seriousness and complexity of these problems, it's hard to see, it's not hard to see why safety becomes a backseat problem sometimes. However, it's essential to consider the extent of which traffic safety impacts the overall safety of our community. In 2020, there was 36,680 people killed in the United States in traffic accidents. That's a 12% increase over the prior 10 years. In comparison...
Mr. Reed, we lost your audio there. Mr. Reed, if you can hear us, we've lost your audio. If he doesn't come back, we will... If he happens to rejoin, we can let him continue.
Would you like me to make him back an attendee for a minute and see if he rejoins?
Yeah, let's do that. We'll move on to the next comment. Mr. Reed, if you are still watching and can hear me, if you fix your technical difficulty, you can rejoin and we'll let you speak. Let's go ahead.
Mr. Reed, I'm gonna go ahead and lower your hand so that if you do come back on, you can raise your hand again and I will see you. Next, I have Kim Morris. Whoops. Okay, Kim, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm Kim Morris. I live on 1117 Elk Hills Drive. Good evening. My name is Kim and I am the homeowner of whose home was involved in the avoidable incident on Saturday evening, August 7th. I have lived in Galt for 17 years. My husband and I made the decision to move our family here as Galt, the great American little town, seemed to promise safety, community, and great schools. This is the place we wanted to raise our children. My husband and I, as well as many of my neighbors, work our butts off to keep our homes looking its best and to ensure our investments in our homes continues to grow. But more than that, we want to feel safe in our own homes. Our home should be a place where we look forward to coming to, a place where we can safely rest our heads at night and not worry that a car may come crashing through our bedroom wall. You may think that this statement is a bit overreactionary, but this is not my first rodeo with this type of air quotes "accident." February 2007, thank goodness my children were at school. A young adult entered Elk Hills Drive by making a left-hand turn from Marango Road. He made the turn so quickly, he lost control of his truck, drove up the sidewalk, through my front yard, and struck my family's van that was parked in the driveway. It was hit so hard that my van was pushed completely sideways and within a foot or two from striking my garage. This was a very unfortunate accident that cost my family financially and made me nervous each time my children wanted to play out front. Years go by and everyone quickly forgets about this incident, but my family never does. Six years ago, my daughter was pulling away from the curb on Elk Hills Drive when an unlicensed and uninsured young driver, driving a borrowed car, was making a right-hand turn from Marango onto Elk Hills Drive. She made the turn so fast and so close to the curb and was too busy turning down her radio that she struck my daughter's car. My daughter had stopped. I witnessed the accident. But because my daughter was pulling away from the curb and even though she had stopped, was found at fault for this accident. Funny enough, the police officer responding to our call knew the young, unlicensed, uninsured driver as they had encountered with her a few weeks prior. Again, this cost my family financially and once again, we feel a bit more unsafe. This is a daily issue for my family and friends. We have all almost been struck many times pulling in and out of our driveway or from the curb as the speeding onto Elk Hills Drive from Marango is a constant battle. April 2021, again, a young adult traveling down Marango had lost control of his car, ran up the curb, through the bushes, and ending up hitting the sound wall. This occurrence was across the street from my home. The sound of the accident still haunts me. You could hear the squealing of the tires and the boom of the crash as the car hit the wall. Luckily, no one was hurt. The wall withstood the impact of the car. No damage was done to my neighbor's home. The police were on scene before I can even had time to run out from my home to see what had happened. Speed and I believe street racing was a factor in this 100% avoidable accident. I talked to the officers on scene and expressed my frustrations with the amount of speeding and donuts and racing that occur all times of the day and night. They know this area is a problem and ensured that they would talk to the chief and let them, let him know so that way they can ramp up patrol in our area. I have been working from home now for over a year and a half and my window faces the corner of Elk Hills and Marango. What I witness on a daily basis frightens me and I feel very lucky that more accidents have not occurred. On the evening of August 7th, when my husband and I were coming home, what we arrived to was quite a sight. There were police officers all over. A truck was being dragged out of my front yard. I see rubble from the sound wall all over my yard, holes in my home, and my fence and gate ripped from its posts. I enter my daughter's bedroom to find pictures knocked off her walls and a cup of water knocked off of her bedstand. What if she had been sleeping there in that moment? You have all probably seen the pictures and know the story. Now I have the battle of dealing with insurance company and the contractors to come in and put my home back together. I have the financial burden of an insurance deductible and once again, I do not feel safe in my own home. I don't feel safe. I do not want to hear, "I'm sorry that this happened." I've heard this so many times now. Sorry is not going to fix and pay for all of this and assure my family and my neighbor's safety. There are so many community members that walk down Marango and Elk Hills. They are elderly neighbors, neighbors out with kids and grandkids, neighbors out walking their dogs. The Marango corridor and entry onto Elk Hills Drive is not safe. Elk Hills is used as a cut-through to get to Walnut. How is, how is the city gonna ensure our safety from being struck by one of the hundreds of speeding cars going by or by one of the reckless drivers doing donuts along all the thoroughfares from Marango? At this, at what point is the city...
Mrs. Morris, are you just about done?
I'm on my last paragraph. I have about one more minute.
Okay.
At this...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, is the city and its council members just as fault for this as the reckless drivers are? When will the stop signs and traffic lights be put in to slow down the drivers along these drag race corridors? Have you considered speed bumps or speed tables? I know studies need to be done to determine whether these kinds of things are needed, but I'm sorry, we are way past the point for studies. We have proof that they are needed. What more needs to happen before action is taken? Are you waiting for a life to be taken or possibly impaired? Again, when is the city just as much as fault for this? I know you cannot answer me tonight, but I would like some answers and some solutions. PD Patrol was prevalent the week after this last occurrence, just like they were the week following all of the other incidents. But now it's again forgotten. Well, it's forgotten by others, but not by my family. When is the city going to take action so I can feel safe again in my own home? What is the city going to do to protect my neighbors and their kids and their pets from being struck? As now it's not, if it will happen again, it's when will it happen next? I thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris. There are no other hands raised online.
If Mr. Reed is not...
Mr. Reed is on the line still, however, his hand is not raised.
Okay, if you wish to speak, you need to raise your hand right now, Mr. Reed.
Actually, he just raised his hand.
Go ahead.
So... Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm not entirely sure where I left off because my phone kinda freaked out. But my point is that there is a traffic safety problem in Galt. And there are two solutions that I think that the city council and the police department can move forward on. One is filling the vacancy of the traffic officer. We have two that are, that are two positions. One is filled, one is vacant. We need that second traffic officer. And then also, I think that the city council, the Public Safety Committee, and the police department should move forward with a maximum traffic enforcement strategy to get out there and prove to the community that A, we take traffic safety seriously. Number two, stop the people that are doing this. And three, all of those together will make our community more safe. I know that in the city council or the Public Safety Committee, we've talked about this several times. And it's just me coming before the city council now, trying to escalate it, get the point across that we need to do something because the people that are out there doing these things, yes, we've put it on Facebook, yes, we put it out there. We have the signs, we do this. They're still ignoring it. So we have to take more drastic measures to get the point across. We mean business and we're out here to stop the traffic problems. That's... That's the summing up version. Thank you for your time. Sorry that I had some technical difficulties.
It's okay, Mr. Reed. Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Do we have any other public comments online, Rose? Rose, do we have any additional hands?
My apologies. No, we have no hands raised online.
Okay. Well, just a quick comment. Again, appreciate the public comments from Ms. Morris and Mr. Reed. I can say to Ms. Morris that I, this isn't going to be forgotten and it's not being forgotten. And I know it may seem that way, but I think at some point, maybe we have a end of report coming up from Public Safety. At that time, maybe I would like Mr. Hines to kinda mention some things that we've kind of been throwing around and talking about. This is, this is, you know, this is something that we are actively discussing. And so maybe he can elaborate a little bit more on some of those things. I don't want to go in depth on it, but... But I thank you for your comments and it is a concern to us. So we take it seriously. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item D, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening, Ms. Hubert?
Yes, first up is the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report.
And I have Laura Schamber.
Good evening, world. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here to present the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 Annual Report. The recommendation approved the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 Annual Report as presented. The background of Measure R was approved by Galt voters on November 4th, 2008. Ordinance number 2008-04 codified in Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 3.40. Section 3.40.150 of the Galt Municipal Code requires the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee to provide an annual report to the city council and the public. The ordinance directs in part that the Citizens Oversight Committee shall conduct an annual review of expenditures of revenue collected pursuant to this ordinance to determine whether such funds are expended for the purpose in the current police services expenditure plan and issue a report, I'm sorry, issue an annual report on their findings to the city council and the people. The Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report is subject to review and approval by the city council. But the Oversight Committee's review is confined specifically to revenues generated pursuant to this ordinance. GMC Section 3.40.50, I'm sorry, Section 3.40.150.0C. Measure R provides funding for police services beyond expenditures for police services as reflected in the fiscal year 2007, 2008 budget. For purposes of Measure R, police services means all programs, functions, and operations of the police Galt Department, I'm sorry, Galt Police Department, including hiring additional police personnel, recruitment and retention of police officers, enhancing youth anti-gang and anti-drug programs, improving police training, purchasing police equipment, enhancing graffiti abatement, and increasing police presence in the city of Galt's neighborhoods, parks, and schools. GMC Section 3.40.140. These expenditures may include all police service costs so long as they supplement the fiscal year 2007, 2008 budget and comply with the ordinance. Currently, the Measure R revenues pay for 10.5 positions, including patrol officers, gang detective, school resource officer, professional standards officer, dispatchers, records technician, and other police services programs costs. The Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee met during the year to review the Measure R financial information and other program information. The attached annual report is being provided by the committee based on information from the meeting and the audited fiscal, audited financial statements for fiscal year 2019, 2020, Fund 47. Through their review, the committee confirmed that proper stewardship, that proper stewardship was maintained over funds in accordance with the Measure R Sales Tax Ordinance Attachments. Number one, Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 Annual Report.
Thank you, Ms. Schamber.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions from a Schamber? No? All right, well, I appreciate your service to the committee and it's an important job. And we are all very lucky to have Measure R and what it does for our community. And we're lucky for those of you serving to, to help make sure that it does what it's supposed to do. Councilman Lozano has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. First of all, thank you, Ms. Schamber, for the reports and in your service as well. I appreciate the Measure R Committee doing what they do to ensure the stewardship of this, these funds that are entrusted to us. I want to thank not only the committee but staff for thinking outside of the box a little bit. One of the things that I just want to mention real quick, that we were able to fund, unlike many cities that are near here, fully fund a body-worn and in-car camera system from Measure R, where cities of much larger size than ours and equal have struggled getting that equipment for their officers. And, and it's been funding. And, and so fortunately, we have Measure R here. And I want to thank all the citizens of Galt in the 2008 election that have brought it in and, and thank Ms. Schamber and the rest of the committee for their hard work on, on the committee as well as keeping an eye on, on the money. So, thank you all.
Well said, council member. I would even piggyback on that and say that, you know, safety and safety is obviously a quality of life issue. And if it weren't for Measure R, we wouldn't have a lot of the things we have. I, the SRO, School Resource Officers, are one of those things that we've supplemented our graffiti abatement for those of you that have seen some posts on social media for graffiti and those things. We have teams that come out 24/7 and take care of that stuff immediately and they're awesome. So all of these things are funded by that tax measure that the people of 2008 voted. And we continue to do great things with that money. So, thank you all. Ms. Schamber, do you have anything else before we let you go?
No. Thank you for giving me the opportunities.
Be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any... Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
No written comment.
Any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
All right, we'll move on to item two, our second presentation, which is our Public Safety Committee Annual Report to the city council. I believe that's being presented by our vice chair, Ms. McCord. Is she on the line?
Yep, she's coming on right now. Teresa, go ahead and unmute your line.
Hello, sorry, my camera's so dark. This is the Public Safety Committee's annual report from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. The committee consists of seven voting members. They include two city council members and five residents of the city. Each city council member appoints one committee member. The Public Safety Committee holds meetings every other month, July, September, November, January, March, and May, on the fourth Monday at 6:00 p.m. The meetings are held in the community room of the police department and are open to the public. For more information on the committee, you can contact Dana Wilkinson, Public Safety Committee Staff Liaison, at danawilkinson@galtpd.com. Purpose and function, the purpose of the Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the city council and to evaluate any public safety issues within the committee, community brought to the committee's attention by the city council, city staff, or residents, and to make recommendations to the city council. The committee shall confine its business to general public safety issues and shall not engage in discussions or address issues that relate to the internal operations of the city, including the police department. Items to be discussed by the committee includes such matters as traffic and pedestrian safety, special events, the emergency operations plan, and other public safety issues. A summary of the meeting activities for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. July 27th, 2020, the committee discussed the annual report review, traffic congestion in the area of Starbucks and Rayleigh's Twin Cities Road, sidewalk obstructions, emergency operation plans, fireworks, information items, COVID-19, future agenda items, and committee goals. September 28th, 2020, the committee discussed Walmart traffic, Twin Cities Road access from an incorporated area, crosswalk markings, ranch road traffic concerns related to development, cooling center operation criteria, walking trail maintenance, parking safety, Carrillion Quiet Zone for railroads. On November 23rd, 2020, the meeting was canceled. January 25th, 2021, the committee discussed chair and co-chair selections, placement of sexually violent predator, information items, use of Galt Connect, recent residential fire. March 22 of 2021, the committee discussed traffic enforcement, stop sign requests, review of recent criminal activity, social media and suicide prevention, streetlight at McTucker area, city planning for cooling and warming centers, sidewalk repairs, flash and crosswalk requests, and information items, staffing review for both police and fire was presented. May 3rd, 2021 was a special meeting. Community-wide traffic concerns, presentation and discussion. And finally, we have June 14th, 2021, the discussion items were the Galt Market Plan, Meadowview Park Traffic, and fireworks safety and illegal fireworks. And that concludes the annual report for the safety committee.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCord. Good job. Does any of the council have any questions for Ms. McCord regarding the report? Okay. All right, Ms. McCord, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your service on the committee.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Mr. Hines?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I wanted to let the folks know that have provided public comment that we also share your concerns. We hear you. And so internally here within the city, we are, myself and the staff are working on making October sort of our unofficial traffic safety month. During the month of October, we intend on releasing a campaign geared toward traffic safety, road safety. And, and so that campaign will be a full media blitz just to let the public know about sort of the dangers and some of the issues we are dealing with with traffic safety. In addition, we are also taking traffic counts on the northeast side of the city where Carrillion and Marango run. We'll also be providing the council with traffic reports... We'll also be providing the council with traffic reports during the month of October. I believe the October fifth meeting, we're scheduled to give a traffic one oh one presentation that'll be provided by our public works director, Mike Selling, where he will talk about the particulars of stop signs, speed bumps, how we measure traffic and and sort of the legal framework that we have to operate within in order to maintain traffic infrastructure within our city. On October nineteenth, we're scheduled to have a conversation about Carrillion. If you recall, Vice Mayor Sandu had brought up an issue related to a stop sign on Vox Hall, a couple of the other council members brought up issues at other intersections on Carrillion. And this dovetails nicely because we actually submitted a vision visionary plan for Carrillion Boulevard to this, the California Energy Commission earlier this year. So now we move from our visionary activities to actual planning. And so that planning begins on October nineteenth. So we're looking at, we're also, we'll be analyzing traffic counts during this period. We're actually analyzing traffic counts as soon as school lets back in, both schools, elementary and high school let back in, we'll be analyzing traffic counts, pedestrian counts, and we'll also be analyzing traffic speed in those areas and we'll be looking to present those to council and to the public during the month of October. And so the, so we'll be preparing all this information during the month of September. Well, I'm also talking with the Galt PD to find out how we can create periods of maximum enforcement during certain times in the northeast area as well. And to create some educational opportunities for those drivers who may be exceeding the speed limit. And so, Mr. Mayor, we have a sort of a whole, a full plate scheduled for October and we'll also be working with the school district as well, both school districts as well. We had a meeting with both superintendents and members of their, the school district boards last night. And I told them about our campaign and they were definitely willing partners and so we'll have their input as well. So there's a lot coming as far as traffic safety coming in the month of October and to those two folks who spoke, we understand and we're doing our best to respond to the issues. There are, there are a lot of traffic issues coming culminating right now and and the city is responding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz, and I appreciate you giving everybody kind of a sneak peek at, you know, what you're doing. I want to thank the, I want to thank you and the staff for being super receptive to this and, you know, willing to, you know, jump in fast and try to brainstorm and come up with something. So, I know, you know, it's a complicated issue and so I appreciate that, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, looking forward to October. So moving on, does any of the council have any comments for what Mr. Heinz just said or we can move on to our next? Nope, okay. All right, moving on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. We will start with our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gave me the opportunity. I did attend a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting on August twelve and we just discussed only a very general agenda item. The only thing, we are looking for a new voting committee on the independent taxpayer oversight committee. Same thing here with measure R, we have an oversight committee, same thing in the S T A committee. And if anybody know any good candidate, please let the S T A know. All they'll go on the website, fill an application or let me know, I will forward that application. And thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow.
I was able to attend the cast meeting, our first one, city and schools together, along with the mayor and the city manager last night. And the city manager already gave kind of a rundown of what our main topic was, public safety, traffic and safe routes to school. So it's good to get that up and running and that's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vanderburg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I attended a SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on the ninth and we talked a lot about AB fourteen oh one, which is a assembly bill going through now that would loosen the restrictions that developers have on parking spaces that for high density housing specifically. And so what that would do is allow them to do fewer parking spaces and that would reduce the cost of that particular development. One of the issues that has come out, at least in Northern California, is the cost of developing those, those types of, that type of housing and and so a lot of it is just not penciling out and as you can imagine, parking spaces with concrete and or, you know, pavement gets pretty expensive and and we see many, many places that have vacant spots all through the day and night. So, this is AB fourteen oh one that's going through the process. And like I said, they, SECOG, the Policy Innovation Committee voted to pass it on to the board to support it. And in the long run, it's going to be up to the developer to determine how many spaces. But it does not take out the ability for the local jurisdiction to require a particular amount, if that makes sense. So, it's kind of a, yeah, come to us with what you think and if it's unreasonable, the local jurisdiction still has the ability to, to to work with them. So that's, it looks like it's going to be a good thing for, for folks. Other than that, you know, talked a little bit about some infrastructure bills that at the federal level that were on the move last week and and hopefully we'll, we'll start seeing some money coming down the pike from those. And then just lastly, we have a SECOG board meeting this Thursday morning, so I'll report back out on that at our next council meeting. So, thank you, thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you, it's interesting. So, question for you on that. So, I mean, I'm glad to hear that they're still leaving control with local jurisdictions. I would be concerned that like in a city like our size, for example, where we don't have like a lot of public transit options that we like have developers come in and build stuff without parking. Doesn't seem like a one size fits all kind of thing or is?
Yeah, yeah, there, I guess the intent here with the legislation is really to loosen it up a little bit because what they're finding in different jurisdictions is that there's an overabundance of parking, especially where development is happening at city centers where, you know, what we're hearing is, is that the youth twenties and early thirties, they like to take public transit and ride bikes. And we're seeing that in a lot of these city center areas. And so I think the idea is really to be more flexible and yet leave the local jurisdiction with the ability to work with the developer on minimum, minimum requirements. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how much it'll really affect us as much, but, you know, like downtown Sacramento, I can imagine where they have honestly, there's, you know, high density housing where there are more bicycle lockers than there are parking spaces. And and that's what the residents move and move therefore and and that's what they do. So, it isn't a one size fits all and I think that that's why the Policy and Innovation Committee supported it, are supported moving it to the full board because it does kind of keep us with local control, which is unlike much legislation these days as we've all talked about lately, but certainly gives the ability to adjust with the times, if you will. So, that, that's kind of the concept.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that information, it's very interesting, actually. So, I guess, oh, I'm next. So, I attended the cast meeting last night along with Councilmember Papinow, as you mentioned. It was a very good meeting, it was nice to meet our, I haven't met her face to face, but our new superintendent, Ms. Pettis. And we talked about a few things, one was kids returning to school and how that was, was going. We talked about some of the measures being used by the school districts or resources, should I say, for counseling or mental health. You know, this is kind of uncharted territory with kids coming off of a year off of school and and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, having the resources available for those kids that may need, that are struggling with that transition back and during the whole year of COVID and still ongoing, how that's taken its toll. We talked about some things related directly to the city and the, and the, and the school district, like our S R R programs. We talked about the impacts those are having and some ideas with that. We talked about the city, which I haven't, well, Mr. Heinz was there. So, we talked about the city P I O officer maybe working hand to hand with the school district on some informational things such as like our beautification cleanups, trying to encourage more participation from younger people. So we wanted to see if the school district could help get that word out that we offer community service in those, in those ways to try to encourage participation. We talked about, the last thing is, we talked about every fifteen minutes. So if you're not familiar with that, it's the C H P drunk driving under the influence thing where they bring out like a crashed car and they, it's kind of a shock thing they do where they usually show kids like this is what the result of, you know, drinking and driving, texting and driving, all those things. I love to hear that they're interested in doing that because I feel that just fits directly into, you know, what we're trying to do in the city with traffic. And I think we need to, you know, this is a multifaceted solution, we need to come with a multifaceted approach to this because it's not a silver bullet solution is out there. So, if we can start with the young people and and in the school districts and then we can do our part in the city. So that was a great conversation and it was nice to, I'm glad to be a part of that and thank you, Councilmember Papinow for being there as well. And I think that's, I actually attended a business mixture, I only mentioned this because council member, supervisor Nativoli was there and representatives from Assemblyman Cooper's office were at the vice mayor's business mixture, which he hosted last Thursday. Was great to see our elected representatives come down for a small event. It was a pretty big event, actually, but and was great to see them and build a network with those people. So, that's all I had. And so with that, we will move on to our consent calendar. Item F, so it is recommended that items one through six be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. These items are, number one is the minutes of the regular meeting from August third, twenty twenty one. Item two is the receive and file warrants for the period ending August third, twenty twenty one. Item three is the award of consult, consult, consultant agreement for the lift station upgrade design project C I P fifty eight K. Item four is the wastewater treatment chemical facility C I P five two one B consultant contract award. Item five is the award of consultant agreement for wastewater treatment plant regulatory compliance support. And item six is the design option selection for the Forest Street Corridor ADA Sidewalk Improvement Project C I P five two one N. Do I have a motion to approve these six items? Moved forward by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
I can divide councilmember Vanderburg, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved, motion by, sorry, Bert five zero. All right, moving on to item G.
Mayor Farmer, we have no forest hands raised.
Oh, yes, Mr., I don't see him on here, Mr. Forrest, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I was just trying to get in the queue. Mr. Selling is going to introduce this item and then I'll take over.
Oh, I got it, yes.
All right, moving on to item G, schedule matters, notice of public hearing. Subject is the annexation of territory to the community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one. Public services, specifically the annexation of number four, Cordoza two. Mr. Selling?
Evening, Mayor Farmer and council members. This item is to consider annexing the Cardoso two residential development into community facilities district twenty twenty dash one. For reference, C F D twenty twenty dash one was approved by the city council in June last year. The C F D is the funding mechanism for new developments whereby various city services such as police and fire protection, flood protection and various ongoing maintenance activities related to streets, lighting and landscaping are paid for. The special taxes proposed to be levied will provide the revenue to offset the cost of providing the increased city services for the Cardoso two development only. Mr. Forrest will provide the staff report, thank you.
Hey, Mike, the Cardoso two is the fourth annexation into the C F D twenty twenty dash one. The, it is located south of Cost Road and west of the railroad tracks and east of the Sacramento County City of Galt limits as it extends south of Cost Road. Cardoso two is approximately twenty four acres of development and eighty seven lots. At your June first, twenty twenty council meeting, the resolution of intention to levy was introduced. The annexation number four map was recorded on June seventeenth, twenty twenty one, excuse me, twenty twenty one. At the July twentieth, twenty twenty one meeting, the city council recommend that this item be continued, this public hearing be continued to today's hearing. With that, I will conclude any additional comments and turn it over to the mayor and city council for action on this item.
Okay, thank you, sir, for the report. Now go ahead and open the public, the continued public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have any, actually skipped a piece here. Madam Clerk, has the public hearing notice been mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff, for many of our council members? Okay. Do we have any? Do we have any written protests or comments in regards from interested parties, including persons owning property within the annexation number four, Cardoso two of the community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one?
None have been received.
Okay. All right. Well, if we have no written protest, we have any public comment online, Rose?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. All right, there's no comments from council? None, all right. Madam Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number four, Cordoza two of the community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one? And if so, the number thereof.
No, the county of Sacramento registrar of voters has stated that there are now no registered voters within annexation number four, Cardoso two of community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one.
Okay. Ms. Hubert, are the owners of all taxable property in annexation number four, Cordoza two of community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one has consented to holding the special election on July twentieth of twenty twenty one?
Yes.
All right. Are there any public comments at this point, either written or online, Rose or Ms. Hubert?
No written comments.
No hands raised.
Well, if we have no public comment online or written, then we will now end the point for the comments to be allowed. Madam Clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held on August seventeenth, twenty twenty one?
Yes.
All right, I will now close the public hearing. I will now call for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the city council of the city of Galt, California. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one. Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California. The question of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation number four Cordoza two.
Then moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vanderburg. Do we vote on that first one there, Tina, or do we go on to the next?
No, we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, alright, can you have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Bye.
Mayor Farmer.
Alright. Resolution is approved five zero. Ms. Hubert, would you now conduct the special election?
I hereby conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
Alright, thank you. Now looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt, Community Services Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one. Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the result of a special election in such community, community facilities district on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said community facilities district to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facilities district, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facilities district with full legal effect and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said community facilities district, including the territory annexed there too, annexation number four Cordoza two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. We have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano. Mayor Farmer.
Alright, resolutions approved five zero. Now looking for a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number four Cordoza two into the City of Galt Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one. Public Services to complete the annexation of the property to the community facilities district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved again by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vanderburg.
I think, did Councilmember Papino do the?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't see which square lit up first. Seconded by Councilor Papino. May I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano. Mayor Farmer.
Hi, resolution is approved, five zero. Alright, we'll now move on to. She, do we have any, do we have to ask for public comments since we had the open hearing for that?
Public hearing was closed.
Got it, yeah, just covering the bases here. Alright. Moving on to the second item of our scheduled matters. It is the draft twenty twenty one to twenty twenty nine housing element study session. The agenda report's gonna be presented by our community development director, Craig Hoffman. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is a study session on our housing element update and let me see, I have a PowerPoint for you. Okay, if everyone could see that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So tonight, we're holding a study session. This was publicly noticed into the newspaper and we have had it on, on our website, both on Facebook as well as the city managers bi-weekly. Tonight, we're looking for the council to receive staff presentation. Staff's looking to answer any comments and questions by the City Council. We're looking for you to open the public workshop tonight, receive any comments from the public. Take any final comments or questions from the council and then direct staff to bring this housing element and initial study and negative declaration back to the council for adoption on September seventh. So tonight, our presentation, we're gonna give you a schedule overview, take a review of the comments that we received by HCD. Review our health, housing element purpose and state laws. Major changes to the housing element that we've seen and next steps. And Rose or Jim and, and Ryan in?
Yes, they are.
Okay, wonderful. So as far as project schedule and engagement, where have we been and what have we done so far? We started this process back in December of twenty twenty with an overview of the housing element in what that process was gonna look like before the City Council. In January, February and March, as well as April, we held monthly meetings before the Planning Commission. We took a look at what our housing needs assessment was gonna be. What constraints may be to, to housing, took a look at our housing sites inventory and actually brought that to City Council. In April, the Planning Commission recommended the draft housing element that we had at that time up to the council to be submitted to HCD for their initial sixty day review. And on May fourth, the council did make that recommendation. We sent this document to HCD. They provided us comments, the Department of Housing and Community Development. Back in July, we started working on making updates. On August twelfth, we held a public hearing before the Planning Commission. They reviewed the housing element as well as the initial study negative declaration prepared for the project and recommended five oh that the City Council adopt the housing element and, and initial study. We've taken the opportunity coming here tonight to hold not necessarily a public hearing for your adoption, but a study session to present all the information to you as well as give the public another chance to, to provide any comments. And then again, coming back on September seventh for the approval of this project. So for the completion of the housing element, again, HCD provided us their review letter that's provided as part of your packet. Again, August Planning Commission hearing, August, September hearings before the City Council. And in September, November and December, HCD will complete their ninety day review of the housing element and ultimately certify that document. So the comment letter that's included as part of this packet, HCD identified the three areas in which they wanted additional information. The first area was in regard to housing needs, resources and constraints in the background report. The second area was in regard to additional information on our housing programs. In the third area, in respect to providing additional information to justify our production housing over time. So within your packet, you have the letter from HCD. You have a housing element comment tractor tracker to HCD identifying the comments received from HCD and how they're being responded to. You have attachment for your housing element policy document in track changes. Those are track changes that you've seen since May. So you can see the changes that have been made as well as attachment five, your housing element background report in track changes. I think a lot of the comments that we've received are more clarifications. We didn't make any changes. No new goals or policies to the document. Really, again, clarifications, if we had any type of programs. Maybe they wanted some additional information. Really, our key revisions were some additional programs in regard to how we're gonna develop our, our accessory dwelling units. How we're gonna support larger lots for some of our multifamily sites. Focusing on some of the special housing that we have, whether it be supportive housing or fair housing services. More requirements from the state, but overall, I would say that they were cleanup items. I felt very satisfied that the document we provided to HCD was a complete document. They provided for some cleanup, but on whole, our document, it, it's a good document and I'm satisfied with the changes that we've made. It'll be certified when we send it in. Again, key revisions for our background report. We've added an analysis of typical fees and process times. We've expanded some programs to provide context and demographics and local investments that we have within Galt. And we've expanded access to opportunities, analysis, include discussions of transportation, environmental indicators. Again, much more background information and demographics. And again, that's all in track changes within the documents you have. Some housing element basics. The purpose, it provides an assessment of both current and future housing needs. Identifies opportunities and constraints on housing production and establishes goals, policies and programs to meet those needs. And what the housing element is looking to do is identify strategies and programs that focus on conserving and improving affordable housing, maximizing opportunities for housing throughout the community. Assisting with the provision of affordable housing. Moving governmental and other constraints to housing investment in promoting fair and equal housing opportunities. And again, you're gonna see this often. The city's role is to provide the opportunity to be built affordable housing. The city does not build affordable housing. But we provide that opportunity. And so for a regional housing needs allocation, the city received a pretty big jump from what was the fifth cycle into what's the current sixth cycle for this housing element. This is gonna be the City of Galt's six housing element. So this is not something new. We've had this for quite some time. This is just, the sixth cycle has been exponential compared to what we've seen in the past. So in the fifth cycle where the community was required to provide six hundred and seventy nine housing units in the very low, low, moderate and above moderate range. This time, we're up at one thousand nine hundred and twenty six units. And I think there was some concern upfront, what was that gonna look like? But through the projects that we have approved, vacant sites and vacant sites for annexation, we were able to accommodate all the units we needed to with just the addition of one ten acre site to provide almost two hundred units. And that was it. We're able to accommodate all of our, our housing needs with the existing zoning general plan and projects that we currently have. And so for this community, that's a big deal because we're seeing throughout the state, a lot of communities are really struggling with that. And our housing element is comprised of basically two documents. We have a background report as well as we have a policy document. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Ryan for a discussion of the details of our housing element. And Ryan?
Thank you, thank you, Craig. So the major changes since the last housing element, which was the fifth cycle housing element, we're now in the sixth. We made updates to existing conditions, demographics, as well as constraints. We updated the housing sites inventory. We added new policies and programs and we covered this new topic of affirmatively furthering fair housing and the contributors, contributing factors to that, which is a, it's a big new requirement from HCD. Next slide, please. So the policy document, the purpose of the policy document is to establish the framework. A framework to guide city decision-making to meet identified housing needs. And like the general plan, it's, it's organized by goals, policies and programs. Next slide, please. So goals and policies in the housing element policy document are organized under the following topic areas. Housing production, housing preservation, special housing needs, residential energy conservation, affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH, which is new residential development constraints, environmental justice and community engagement. Next slide, please. So the majority of the changes simply reflect new state law requirements. We're gonna have to, we have programs to update the development code for ADU standards, objective design standards and a number of new state laws. We also made changes to streamline language and to, to delete programs that were complete. Next slide, please. So on the next few slides, we're gonna go through some of the new policies and programs. If you see it in green, it's new. If you see it in orange, it's modified from the previous cycle. And if you see it in blue, it was carried over from the previous cycle directly. And what you'll notice is most everything's green and that's just because so much of this is driven by new state. Next slide, please. So program areas, the first big area is updating the development code. You can see we have a number of programs here that are all requiring updates to development code for a number of of topics, including density bonus, ADUs, mobile home parks, low barrier navigation centers, et cetera. Next slide, please. Then the next topic area is AFFH, the affirmatively furthering fair housing. And what you'll notice is, like I said, this is the biggest new thing. There, there's two pages, there's two slides here of policies and programs. We added, I think, eleven new policies. And I think there's a total of ten programs, just, just regarding AFFH and fair housing issues. Next slide, please. Here's the rest of them. So quite a few, quite a few. Next slide. And then the next area is environmental justice. We added three, three policies geared at environmental justice issues. HCD seemed very happy. Next slide. And then lastly, community engagement. We added some new policies and programs to not just promote community engagement, but also to promote community engagement through a lens of equity and fair housing to try to reach the whole community instead of just what's been done in the past or, or for instance, just in English, right? Next slide, please. So I'll quickly go through the new requirements or the analysis for the AFFH section. It's all being driven by AB six eighty six, which requires jurisdictions to take actions to overcome patterns of segregation, address disparities in housing needs, assess and address fair housing practices, examine the relationship between the sites we choose for the housing element and areas of high opportunity, and to identify the contributing factors to fair housing issues. Next slide, please. So quickly, the analysis found identified fair housing issues being limited access to opportunity in and around the city, a slight susceptibility for displacement and overcrowding. And the factors contributing to those are the availability of affordable units or lack thereof. Access to opportunity and land use and zoning laws. And I'll quickly go through each of these on the next slides. So the first issue was access to opportunities. HCD provides a number of, of opportunity maps through their technical assistance program. And the idea is that these consider economic, educational, environmental, transportation indicators and they will, they they relate how like which areas are high and low resource, excuse me. So most of the block groups in Galt are actually considered a low or moderate, moderate resource areas. And what they want, what they wanted us to do was to take a look at these maps and see what areas are consistently lower resource. We can go to the next slide, please. Here's two of those maps. On the left, we have education scores and on the right, economic scores. And so the idea here is to again, look for areas that are consistently low, receiving less positive. Receiving less positive scores and then to, to think about why and to analyze. Next slide, please. So the, the next issue was susceptibility to displacement. There's a number of indicators that, that define displacement. Including the proportion of very low income residents, share of renters being high. Share of people of color in the neighborhood being high, etc. Next slide. And what you'll see on the displacement map here is that central and southern Galt are more sensitive to displacement. And it makes sense with the development pattern of the city. Next slide, please. The, the next issue was overcrowding. And what the analysis found was that overcrowding is more prevalent. In households that identify as Hispanic, multiracial or people of color. And that disparity in rates is a major impediment to fair housing. Next slide, please. And then the, the contributing factors to those issues. Availability of affordable units. And the analysis found that the, the city should. In ensure the availability of land, provide incentives to build at higher densities and provide incentives to expedite the development process. Next slide, please. And then access to opportunity being the other contributing factor, the city, the city should continue to share information on housing resources. Continue to work with local agencies and should consider equity in the provision of public services and cleaning facilities. Next slide. And then finally, regarding land use and zoning laws, the city should streamline the development. Of affordable housing types. Objective design standards are a key to this. And then to just work to comply with state law, which is pushing this issue. Next slide, please. And that's it.
I think with this slide, I just wanted to go back, you know, one of the cornerstones of doing the. The housing element update was to identify sites. And so. One thing that HCD did like is. Our sites, whether they be for. Lower income, moderate income or above moderate are spaced throughout the community. And so they like that. And. We were able to satisfy, if you look at this. Site, we were able to satisfy what we needed to complete. With really all these existing developments. We had one site. That we had to identify to satisfy our housing needs. And that's. A nine point nine acre site that will look to do a general plan amendment and rezone. But. This process worked out really well for this community. And I had a lot of concerns when we start out. And I think I voiced that. Over and over to this council, said this was going to be a bumpy ride. In the end. I think this community, we were able to satisfy our requirements to the state. And I think this is a document that we'll be able to implement for the next. Next eight years. And with that, that satisfies our, our presentation. If I could turn this back over. To the mayor and comments from the council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I'm not sure which the council members had their hand up first. I apologize. I'm going to go ahead and call on Councilor Lozano first.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Hoffman, thank you for the presentation yet again. I think we've seen this a million times, but certainly last, last week at the planning commission, I was able to. Come in and, and take a look at it again, which was very helpful, by the way. As we moved into not to tonight's meeting. Thank you for the public outreach and the, the seven. So far, meetings we've had on this, on this topic, and it is an important topic. Our arena numbers looked dismal, as you mentioned. And, you know, I want to just point out for the, for my colleagues that this, this was not something unique to Galt. There were almost, well, I think every, every agency in the Secog region. Were hit pretty hard this year comparatively, or comparing to the cycle, fifth cycle. So. I, I think we. You know, we came out of it. A lot better than I thought. Like Mr. Hoffman mentioned, I, I thought it was going to be just. You know, bad news all the way around to get to, to our new numbers. So. One of the questions I had was back on. As it related to overcrowding and I think that was. I can't remember the slide. What does overcrowding mean and how does that affect? It's like thirty-three, looks like. What, what does that mean? And how do we get to those numbers?
Ryan, I guess I'll turn.
I, I can't remember the exact definition. There's a strict definition. I think it's more than one person per bedroom. Is considered overcrowded. I can tell you that you're not the only. City whose charts are, look like this. Everyone's dealing with overcrowding, just. Affordable housing being so hard to come by. I could tell you that HCD wants to see this analysis and then see, see us adjust to try to. Not only increase. Affordable housing citywide, but to try to increase it in. High resource areas. So you don't have overcrowding condensed in demographic areas. Or say in, in southern Galt.
But is it fair to say that some of this is driven by the increase of. The value of property in terms of rent. I mean, I haven't rented a house for a while, but. Is it, is it rental prices and housing prices that are driving some of this? And then I have a concern of why is it, you know, only, and I mean. Honestly, if you look, it's only three categories of the, what, seven? And, and how does that compare to our, our ethnic breakdown of, of the city? You know, so that's, I think it's kind of a rhetorical question, but. Interesting, interesting nonetheless. So anyhow, I, I, that's all I really had. I know there's a lot of questions about. You know. Affordable housing and what does that mean and. You know, high density versus moderate and, and things like that. But I appreciate all the work that's been done over the years. With the general plan and things like that, because I think that a lot of that is like Mr. Hoffman said, is what saved us. From having to go through a grueling task of, of meeting those numbers like. I'll give you an example. I, I couldn't imagine being, you know, the city of Davis or the city of. Ranch Cordova, you know, things like that where. I don't know that they're going to have the ability to, to do this as easily as us. So anyhow, thank you so much. Thank you to the planning commissioners for. For hitting this head on and, and, and I, I plan on supporting this when the time comes to move it forward.
Councilmember Lozano, maybe if I could respond. We are seeing houses holding more than one family. We're holding, we're seeing houses hold generations of families to where it's parents and it's a. It's adult children and that raises some of the. The numbers of, you know, amount of people per, per bedroom. I think the greatest challenge. That we're going to have in the upcoming eight years is providing the type of housing. That. Families want and it's going to be multi-generational. We are getting requests that. A housing unit isn't just the primary house. It's maybe an accessory dwelling unit as well that provides for. Maybe the slightly older kids or, or the parents are moving into the house. So. We really need to think about that and we're being challenged on a daily basis saying. We need you to think about how this community is providing housing and making sure that we're providing housing to. To a wide range of folks in this community.
Yeah, I, I would agree and I, you know, I, I don't mean to take. Give my colleagues an opportunity here, but I, I would agree and I've said it for, for three years now that. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, young folks that are in careers or, or just out of college. Or just out of trade school or, or whatever. Are unable and, and, you know, outside of the housing boom that we've seen here at the last, you know, year and a half. But are unable to purchase a property here. To live in, to stay in this great city. Let alone rent. There's just that rental housing inventory is like next to nothing. And so. You know, I think that as we move forward, that maybe with. Some different types of housing that to, to go into these infill projects. Might help loosen up. You know, the amount of folks that are in, in a, in a bedroom in a, in a particular house. And, you know, I have, I have. A couple of people in my house that eventually will be gone and will free up bedrooms, but I certainly hope that they're able to. To buy here in Galt, you know? And so, thank you for your time again and I appreciate the work. That you all have done on this and, and. It's, it's going to be nice to go to Secog this next week and say, you know, we're, we're well on our way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Councilmember Vanderburg, go ahead. You're. You're still muted, Jay.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ryan, I'm, I'm curious if you factor in or how, if you do factor in immigrant families, you know. I came to Galt and we lived thirteen people in a thirteen hundred square foot home and that's. Precisely the thing we're talking about that, but one generation later, all thirteen of us have separate home. Well, ten of us now have separate homes. So do you factor those kinds of analysis into the numbers that we see?
We use census information. So the demographic information, it's, it's just residents. It's not. There's no, there's no immigrant or, or citizenry status involved in the data.
Okay. I was just curious because that could, you know, it's pretty common, I think, for people to cut, that come to this country to. Hold very tight to their funds and resources until. They get an established foothold in the communities, wherever that may be. And then, you know, we tend to expand from there. So something to consider when, you know, long term. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Hoffman, I, I was curious. In order, we all know that, you know, speed of government is a little less than we'd like sometime. Does the city ever reach out to? Landowners. In areas. That meet our needs to see if. They want land rezoned to better meet both. Landowners and the city's needs simultaneously to not speed up the processes we are talking about.
Well, we do have a general plan and it identifies specific land uses for varying areas of town. When we started this process. As far as, you know, what were going to be the sites that we needed to put in the housing element. You know, some of the direction, you know, not cited within an existing neighborhood. Property owner agrees to the general plan and zoning change. We had a property owner come forward. It was that one star property south of Seminole and north of Bosso. And it was an easy site. That was not surrounded by an existing neighborhood that for a housing element standpoint. It checked the boxes. It would be easy. But we do have property owners that come to us all the time and say, hey, we want to do this project. You know, what do you think? And I go, well, we're going to have to do a workshop with the neighborhood. It's not a slam dunk. With the general, with this housing element, we really need a slam dunk because. If we identify sites to, to put. In our sites inventory. If something happens in the future, we can't undo that or else we'd have to come up with a new site, Mr. Vanderburg. Does that make sense? So.
Yes, it does.
I wasn't that adventurous when, when we were looking at sites. I was very conservative. And I came up with sites that I knew we could use. But in the future, if somebody comes up to me and says, hey, I want to do this. We take it through a process. We go to the planning commission. We go to the city council. Can we add that site to the housing element? We could. Do we need to today? We don't. But could something happen between now and eight years down the road? Some sites are going to underdevelop, some are going to overdevelop and we may need additional sites. We don't need them now. But we're always looking for quality projects. They're going to provide something that this community needs from a housing standpoint. And if somebody would want to build affordable housing. True affordable housing. Yeah, I'd want to sit down with them because. The state's looking for that. They're no longer looking for this community to say. We're providing the opportunity. They've moved into, show me you can do this. And not only that, but prove it that it can take place.
Right. So let's. This fast forward to two years before we have to do this again. And if you were to reach out to business landowners, not business owners, landowners. And you were to find, ask them ahead of time. Would they be interested instead of them? Coming to us after we've completed this process, we may, you know, it's more of a symbiotic relationship, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I would say that it happened this, this time around too. We just didn't need that much land. We already had that much that was. Approved that we could use. It was, all we needed was ten acres. I had somebody that said, hey, I want ten acres. It wasn't in an existing neighborhood. We weren't going to have the controversy going to the planning commission and city council. It fit. But I was very nervous that what you're describing, that we were going to have to do in a greater order where we're going to be. Knocking on doors going, hey, would you like to do this? We didn't have to do it. We may in the next housing element.
That's right.
So, so we're trying to be conservative in the amount of housing that we're showing here. Because in twenty twenty-nine, we're going to have to do this all over again. And so we need to make sure that we have sites and that we're conserving. What we may need in the future.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment, well, more of a, more of a statement. And then I have a question, but. You know, what I always think about with this is just how frustrating it is that, you know, our, our government will come and say. You know, we need to have more affordable housing. And when it's the market, I mean, it's most of their own policies that are creating the problem with. Non-affordable housing. I mean, you have a developer who buy a lot of land. And before he even builds a house, he has, you know, an exuberant amount of money into that because of. Because of, you know, legislation that's been passed over the years, you know, from a plethora of different things, especially in California. And then by the time the house is built, you know, the house has to be five hundred thousand dollars. And then. The government says, oh, oh, you know, we, you can't, that's just too much. We need to have more affordable housing. We need to have a program. It's like. You guys are creating the problem. I mean, look at inflation right now. I mean, lumber is so expensive. I can, these people that are building the, the. Projects that are underway are probably just cringing. I mean. It's, it's, it just seems funny. I see all these slides you show where it's like, we need to do this, we need to do better about. You know, this and that. And I'm just thinking like, it's just. It's like they're creating a problem and they're trying to come back and try to figure out how to, how to fix it. And force cities like Galt to basically, you know, basically forcing us to grow more or less. I am very happy that we didn't have to do much work to abide by. You know, this housing element cycle, but I'm still overall very frustrated that you have. You know, a state like California that says, you know. You know, that we need to have more affordable housing in this place. I mean, demography, you know. Geography controls the market. I mean, it's like going Beverly Hills and saying we need to have more affordable housing. It's like. Some areas just cost more to live in. Galt, you know, right now I feel that Galt is expensive because we don't have a lot to pick from. But the people of Galt historically have wanted the community to stay small and most of them still do want that. And so for us now being hit with things like. Senate Bill three thirty, for example, where, you know, it's an emergency housing bill and, you know, you gotta have this, that and the other thing. And, you know, Galt being asked to add nineteen hundred and some odd units and, and grow, you know. A certain high percentage of, I mean, that's, it's just frustrating that we, we, you know, again, I'm glad we were able to comply, but. To piggyback on Jay's comment, you know, a lot of migrant family, you know, there's a lot of families that, that choose to not. You know, go, I mean, they, they actually, you know, are frugal and they pull their money together and they do that on purpose. They're not. You know, having two, three generations living in a house because they, because they don't want to. Sometimes they actually prefer that. It's just, it's, it's kind of a. You know, sometimes grandparents living with family, that's just some of the makeup of some ethnicities that do that. I, I mean. I, I think some of these studies are skewed. But anyways, I'm just venting on my frustration with. But anyways, I'm just venting on my frustration with Galt being told what to do. My question to all of you was, and this is a question I get a lot from citizens. Every time we see a housing development or something being built in town, you know, if you watch the news. You know, everything is like drought this, drought that, the world's gonna end, you know, we're gonna have to quit taking showers. And I get these all the time, I know that Galt is a little bit unique from some other areas. But we all still live in the same state, we're all, you know, susceptible to drought, people are always asking me. You know, we're being forced to build all these houses, we're being forced to do this, forced to do that, what about the water? I know in your, on page twenty one of your. The negative declaration packet, it mentioned on item B that. There was no decrease to groundwater supplies, or there was no impact to groundwater supplies. Can you, Craig, or maybe even Mike? For the people that are watching, kind of comment on that, and how does, how does this forced escalation in housing? That the state's handing down, how, at the same time asking us to draw back water, that just doesn't seem to go together.
So let me start, Mike, and then I could turn it over because with your groundwater studies that you're doing. So when the city does its general plan, you have to do utility master plans with that document. And you look at sewer, you look at water, you look at drainage where that's going, overall street circulation utilities. And so for our general plan, we identify the facilities we need to provide water. And yes, we have wells, we use groundwater. But we, our general plan does identify that we're able to provide. Those facilities and more and more, we're seeing water conservation, yeah, new houses don't have lawns anymore. They have water efficient. Wash machines and and dishwashers, so. Houses are using less water. We can provide that water, but I think, Mike, big picture, what we're doing from a basin standpoint, I'd have to turn that over to you.
Yeah, I'll try not to get too far off topic here, cuz that's something that I was gonna speak on in my comments later. But, yeah, the city is involved with six other agencies for a groundwater sustainability plan. And as Craig noted, there's been a number of, you know, improvements on the conservation side. Whether that's things like washing machines, or there was an executive order in two thousand fifteen that limits the amount of saw that can be put in. So, so there is some effort to get more water efficient landscaping requirements too. And and by and large, urban development. Residential particularly uses less water than ag typically, and depends on the type of crops, but. Most ag crops use significantly more water than than urbanized areas, so. But as Craig also noted, the general plan looks at that and there is sufficient water. The other thing that we're doing on that sustainability plan is there are some projects identified to. Increase the amount of what we call recharge, basically putting water back into the aquifer below the sea. And the surrounding consumers area, so, but there will be a lot more, you know, information coming on that. We've got three workshops planned that I'll touch on later, coming up, and where we can hopefully answer those questions in more detail.
All right, thank you for touching on that, I'm gonna go to my other councilmembers here before I make my last comments, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Sally, and all your staff, all your team. You get a really good job, and this is a big project. I know you spend a lot of time on that, and especially, we are happy with that report, and you are happy. And the only thing I might be have a couple of clarification, if you look at the. The staff report. Do you know the six goals we have, can you a little bit explain our goal number five and goal number six?
So, on page three of the staff report, the six goals, they come straight from the housing element. I think. You said four and five, so the.
Five and six.
Oh, five and six, so take action to overcome patterns of segregation. Address disparities in housing needs and access to opportunity and foster inclusive communities. I think overall, what you're trying to do is make sure that you're not throwing. All the affordable housing in one area of town, you're you're spacing it out throughout the community and. One thing that HCD really did like was how they, how the city spaced out all of its, its housing. The notch annexation is a big deal for this community, being able to take Corillian and. Connect that over to C Street. And A Street, that connection, connecting the east part of town and the west part of town, that's a big deal. As we're developing new neighborhoods, we need to make sure there's continuity of design. That we're providing different types of housing, the general plan does that. And that's really what we're trying to do is is reduce segregation and make sure. We have opportunities by opportunities, a lot of times that's retail in areas, that you have schools. You have services, whether it be transit, so that's really what that goal is talking about. And then on six, reduce constraints to housing development and maintenance. And that's trying to streamline the process of of a of developing housing. A lot of times if. I mean, in the last three years, this community has approved a lot of housing, and I think we've shown a track record that. As long as it's consistent with the general plan, as long as it's consistent with the zoning code, it's processed in a timely manner. And, you know, for a lot of the developers, time is money, that you don't have a. A project just stagnate. This council has also taken a look at a number of projects and upzoned them. Taking them from some of our ten thousand square foot lots, whether it be. Like the Veranda project comes to mind, like Caterina Estates comes to mind. Where we took projects, we upzoned them, still so that they fit within the neighborhood. But the state wants to see that, they want higher densities, but as long as they meet the needs and they look right for this community. That's what matters, and that's, I think, what goals five and six are looking to accomplish.
And Mr. Hoffman, the. The number five, and we said we tried to spread all over in the city, but on the west side. I do not see any affordable housing on the west side of the town, so all are look like an east side.
Here, wait, if I could go back to sharing my screen. So a lot of the housing is on the west side of town, because that's where the new development is taking place. If you look, oh, sorry, on the east side of town, that's where the new development's taking place. Why don't we have a lot on the west side of town? It's already built out, it's already established, and we're required to provide new housing. And new housing in Galt is primarily taking place on the east side of town, that's where. The newer developments taking place, other than some infill projects, where you see number thirteen, which is Fairway Oaks. Six Caterina, we've had Cardoza one, Cardoza two, we have had some infill projects on the. The west side of town, but the majority of the new development, yeah, it does take place on the east side of town, and that's. That's just the way the city's growing, HCD doesn't look at us and go, no, you have to provide more. Housing on the west side of town, you just have to disperse it evenly, you can't take all of one type of housing. Put it just in one area and go, there's no roads to it, there's no services over there. Space it, make sure you have facilities, transit. And, you know, access to retail, access to to services.
All right, thank you, the next question is on preliminary site summary. You know, you mentioned that I think a location number eighteen and twenty one, right? Location number eighteen, that's come in a surplus, right, we actually does not need it, but. The staff asked to the honor, or honor asked the staff, because we already in a surplus. Even if we exclude that, just as a hypothetical.
So typically what happens when you're identifying your sites? You provide more housing than what is needed. Because if you don't provide a surplus and you have a project. Let's just say it was ten acres and it was supposed to develop with two hundred units. And it doesn't, it comes in and develops with a hundred and eighty units. You couldn't approve that project until you went and found another site. To build and exist an additional twenty units, so as part of our overall housing. Let's see if I can get back to, I think, what you were describing. So this slide, we do have a requirement, we have to provide a certain amount of units. With the above moderate, with moderate, a lot of that's coming from the Eastview project, some of our larger subdivisions. In our lower numbers as well, we do provide a surplus. So that if something happens, if something doesn't develop the way we anticipated. We don't have to go out and completely redo our housing element and come up with new sites, that's why we're providing a surplus.
And if I could add to that very quickly, even though the arena is nineteen hundred and some odd units. The state actually requires that you provide twenty percent more, so it seems like a surplus, but it's actually required, you you have to.
So the state required twenty percent mandatory or. And this anywhere in the report, it says whatever the arena then plus twenty percent.
I don't think that's in the.
I don't think it's listed specifically, but if you, even with the surplus that we had, HCD was still. And you you could see it in the comment tracker, they were still questioning some of our units. And we had to point out that we're above their even surplus that they require.
No, no, Ryan, I don't understand that, but I have that this might be state wants to more because we don't wanna same thing Mr. Hoffman said. We don't wanna be down the road, if any project does not wanna develop or they they change their plan, so we don't. You know, falling behind, but my other thing is the location number, I think on.
Okay, twenty one?
Yeah, twenty one, there's still in 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 the county, that location is not in the city yet, right?
That's part of the the notch annexation that should be done in the next few months, that's a site that was designated is is mixed use. The mixed use zoning designation does allow for multifamily housing within that designation. And it's a sixteen acre site, and we were able to count four acres of that site as a part of the. Our arena numbers.
Okay, the mixed use site isn't still in the county, right, is not in the city.
It currently is, and that is a site that will be annexed again within the next few months.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman, and I have a few more question on the report. Housing element study session. I'd like to go on. Page number two.
Okay.
And number six, MH. You know, the node added to the table seven point four three and seven point four four, can you a little bit explain just a brief?
On on page two of the staff report?
And no, 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 you know, that's the housing element study session, that big package.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And that's the say, MH, number six.
Yes, so I can, I can expand on that, Craig, if you don't mind.
Okay, oh, are you talking about the matrix, our comments back to HCD?
Yes, yes. Moment, I like to be clarification, there might be a few more, I like to just want to clarify.
Sure, so those notes were added because typically in a city that has more experience. With developing, the HCD would require you to provide a comparison. To another development that developed similarly and became affordable and had. They wanna see totals for costs of of living there. But since the city can't provide that, we just have to provide these notes for clarification. We can't provide a comparison that doesn't exist.
All right, thank you, then, my next question is on the same page. Now there, one of the developer on the report said they also requested to build the ADU, and which developer that is?
Oh, that's a Morali Estates is gonna be coming forward, doing a a. Design review, and they've asked to potentially have. Accessory dwelling units incorporated with the project design, that's gonna be the first time this community seen something like that. And so, we came up with this idea that. Over eight years, we anticipate that the city will build about sixty four ADUs, eighty year. And we had agreed to that number, and then, you know, COVID has. Wrecked a little bit of havoc with some of the state agencies, their level of coordination and discussion. Isn't quite what it used to be, and they came back and said, well, we think it should be a lower number, and we said, no, we agreed to this number. And let us show you why we think it's gonna be more, we're getting a lot more. People contacting us about building ADUs, and hey, we even have a project that wants to build that, so that's part of our narrative back to HCD.
All right, thank you, then, number nine on the same report. There's the. There's the permit fees, twenty six thousand nine thirty. That fees is much before, or this can be with the the housing element?
No, that's what they currently are now, they, HCD just wanted to know, what are our fees for building multifamily within this community?
Okay, then my next question on this, the next page is application process time, that time. Is very, we are doing that, or that time just like an application for building permit one day?
So those are the current processing times, they asked us to state what they are and then say. Like, they they don't wanna see these to be months and months and months, so we stated what they are and said that it's it's not a constraint.
So, an application for a building permit, it usually takes a person a day to fill out their application and submit it. And for us to accept that application.
Okay, thank you. And my next, can you give me a little bit of clarification on number eleven? MH?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ryan.
The state has a new state, there's a new state law that says if you have. If you wanna set up a residential care facility with more than eight beds. You can no longer require a conditional use permit in certain scenarios. So that clarification is to make that clear to the state. That the that the city won't have a conditional use permit in the future.
So we are, so we as a city, we adopting that state's recommendation, right, so there does not need any. Use permit if you have the facility more than five units, right?
We're gonna have to update our development code, we have like three years to update that, so we have a number. Of programs within our development code and providing handouts that we need to prepare.
All right, and that's it, I'm so far, I will support that. On a study session to support that. That is high to. And thank you again, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Pappin out.
Yes, now, first off, my compliments on a great job on the the whole project. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for asking the water question, and definitely wanted to hear that. So one quick question on page thirty six of the PowerPoint. It says a streamlined development of affordable housing types. And you pointed out how we kind of streamlined everything, and in some cases, you know, we're pretty quick with approving the the upzoning. I just was curious, what other streamlining can we do, or do we do? For affordable housing as opposed to the other housing types?
Okay, what's? Oh, go ahead, Ryan.
Oh, I was just gonna say, well, one thing that the state is requiring is that all jurisdictions have a. A path to approval for projects with an affordable component that is is objective. That is not discretionary and has no discretionary analysis involved in the approval of that. So that's one of the things that the city is going to have to adopt in the next three years is. And and cities, all cities and counties all through the state are considering this. And one of the things that. Will be considered at that time is who you want it to apply to. Do we want it to just apply to the minimum as defined by the state? Do we want to go further and streamline the development of residential housing beyond that? And and that's something that will need to be decided at that time.
Thank you.
Read mine, Mr. Lester, as in. Don't get in the way of it.
Yeah, they they, so the state calls it streamlining, but really, yeah, it's just a matter of removing any discretionary. Review from the process. So no design review. You can have standards as long as they're objective. And they have to be understood by everyone, both the developer and the person on the on the other side of the counter equally. They have to be clear.
But to read between the lines here, basically limiting limiting an elected body such as us to represent the people of Galt. To really have much say in anything. I mean, if we zone according to if we 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 put this housing to this housing element, which I'm. Most likely we will come September. If somebody comes in and says, you know, I want to build a three hundred unit housing development in a set area. You know, if we don't really think the project fits or we don't like something about the project, I mean, other than design. Changes and stuff, we really can't get in the way of it, even if there was public opposition, right?
Right. The state is trying to make it harder for you to say no.
Yeah, it's lovely. I have a, I have a really interesting question for you, Lester. I'm sorry, Mr. Lester. And maybe you or Jim can answer it. So what what I was disturbed by when I first saw this a while back was. Why Galt seemed to have been singled out? In in all the municipalities in Sacramento County, Galt was asked to to add the most housing units, only second to Folsom. We were asked to add. Thirty one percent increase to our housing inventory, only second to Rancho Cordova, which was asked to add thirty four. Every other municipality in Sac County was not asked for such a high amount. Why were we singled out?
Ryan, you want me to start?
Yeah, go for it, Jim.
Well, that's that's a a mystery and. The it's still difficult for us to kind of parse out what the how the Rena allocations. Work, but they the HCD worked with Secog to allocate the. The units and there are very complex formulas they use that. Are combination of growth projections, available land, zoning. General plan. So it's a. Jobs, housing balance, so a whole range of topics that go into that. So there is a. There was a process that Secog went through. I would, I don't know, maybe two years ago. That all the jurisdictions had an opportunity to participate in. Frank, I did not participate in it, so I'm not clear on what the. How the results came out to have Galt have. A higher kind of percentage of allocation than some of the other jurisdictions. So. I can't answer that specifically. I do want to go back to your earlier comment about. Folks coming in with three hundred unit development and not having discretion. The theory and behind what Ryan was talking about earlier with the objective. Design standards is the state saying, if you have land that is designated in your general plan for housing. And your zoning code designates it for housing. Then you've essentially said housing is okay there at that density. And what the state is saying is we don't, we want to limit your discretion to decide whether or not you like that specific housing project or not. If it meets all these other objective criteria. So that's what it's not so much forcing housing that you weren't planning for. It's limiting your discretion to decide, is that a well-designed project? Is that the kind of project we want here? Does it look okay? But the objective design standards that Ryan was talking about really provides us the opportunity. To decide in advance what you want the projects to be like. So you. Go through a process of establishing these standards, just like you've established your zoning standards. That says what your height limits are, what your setbacks are, what you decide what your design requirements are as well. And then that essentially frames what these projects, future projects have to comply with before they can. Get that administrator or ministerial approval. So it's. It does limit your discretion on each project down the road, but you still have the discretion today to decide what you want to see in those projects.
And this is some, sure, and I was gonna add, this is something that we need to update. Our development code is going to have to have these design standards in them. And and once we put them in, it's going to help. But. It also goes back to why the site selection is so important. That we're placing housing in certain places. In a lot of the housing that we're doing, even HCD says, you know, the the ideal site is somewhere between. Like four to to less than ten acres. So the concern about, hey, are we going to build a a three hundred unit? Facility someplace. Well, that's what we're doing with the site selection. We're being careful and making sure. We're placing this type of housing in areas. We want to see it take place so that we aren't surprised, you know, down the road.
Yeah, I know. I get what you're saying. That makes sense. I just, you know, things change in nine years. I mean. You know, maybe I'm saving my money up to buy a certain thing. And then maybe in a couple of years, I decide I don't want to buy that certain thing. I want to go a different direction. I mean. People change, elected bodies change. I I just, I just, I just don't like the idea of things being removed. I mean, I'm not anti-growth. I mean, I think. I've represented my willingness to approve projects, you know, I since I've been on this council, we have approved many infill projects, but they were the, they were good projects. They were infill projects. They made sense. You know, I've only voted against one project, but I didn't make, I didn't think it made sense to me. And so, but it's just frustrating that, you know, that a city like Galt's asked to grow significantly. Galt is special and people live here for a certain reason. One of those reasons is. The size of the community. Now we have the state of California coming in and want to turn us into a different city. I mean, El Grove probably would have loved to have the nineteen hundred and twenty seven units that we were having. They probably would just build them in a month. But we don't. Actually, we don't want that. So it's frustrating.
If it's any consolation, this is happening all over the state and it's a function of. At at the, at the state level, a determination to accommodate a higher level of population than what the earlier. Previous fifth and fourth cycle arenas were accommodating. They have. The the population projections have ramped up substantially for that are the base for Rena. And so now we're. Working with one jurisdiction has a nine hundred percent increase in their Rena from the fifth cycle. So that's some consolation to you, other than to know that you're in it with a lot of other jurisdictions that are equally frustrated about. Not only having to accommodate so many more units, but have it potentially change the character of the community. And it's, I I I sympathize you, your frustration. And I'm not quite sure how to deal with it, but. It's a, it's become universal, I think.
It's just.
So and so here's our obligation. We're providing the opportunity. We're citing and locating. One thousand nine hundred and twenty six units. Do I think one thousand nine hundred and twenty six units are going to build in eight years in Galt? No way. Never happened. But we're meeting our state obligation and we're citing those. They don't all have to build, just the opportunity has to exist for that to take place. And we've met that obligation.
Well, I hear you, Craig, and hopefully you're right. But I've heard. A lot more powerful officials than yourself, no offense, say that certain things weren't going to happen and then we just saw them unfold on TV. So anyways, Mr. Lozano, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. In regards to Rena and and kind of the, what appears, at least from my perspective, the the genesis of it. The current administration at the state level has really had a put, made a push for housing. In the last two and a half, three years. And so I think what you're seeing is is policy related to housing. Being pushed down to the local level and and I don't even know that that. Even even regional bodies have an opportunity to to defend against it. And so. Again, you know, I've said it a million times too, is, you know, the the unfunded mandates that constantly come from the state. Are horrible. And I'll give you an example. With this whole huge increase across the region of Rena numbers, there's a city in Yolo County that has a huge university. They nine, ten months a year, they have, you know, however many thousands of students that 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 attend that university. There for a while, and I don't even know what the final outcome was, but they were not not able to count. The housing that those university students lived in because they're not permanent residents. And so. I mean, this this whole cycle has been kind of, it's been, it's my first, but seems to be kind of weird and and. You know, I I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I would agree with, I would agree with Mr. Hoffman that I I can't imagine. I mean, I've I've asked to pull that up, have the numbers pulled of our our actual permits pulled and houses built in the last five years. And it's. It's that I would be shocked also if nineteen hundred houses were built in eight years or units were built. But. You know, it's. You know, it's frustrating. It's absolutely frustrating. So. That's it.
Thank you. One last question, or maybe it's just a, you know, there's a lot of talk about the population of California. I mean, there's a lot of people that say, oh, no, it's not going to be, it's not going to be. But I mean. I wouldn't bet against the fact that the population, the people exiting California, they already shown where people, more people are leaving than coming in, at least this last year. And they're. Trying to chalk that up to various reasons that they say will not repeat themselves. But I mean. I mean, it's weird that they're requiring all this additional housing, like they foresee some kind of need. But yet, the numbers of people exiting the state don't seem to match up with that. Any thought on that, Mr. Lester?
Well. I'm sure we all have our opinions on that. I think the the state would try to argue that the people are already there. And that the housing need is such that the prices are through the roof. And so. You know, that's that's their argument is that we need to get the the prices down, even with people leaving, I think, is is their perspective. You know, like I said, we all have our opinions on on that.
Thank you. Does any other council member have any questions for Mr. Lester or Mr. Harnish or any of your staff on this item? Well, I think it's been a good discussion, a lot of stuff been raised. I mean, I know we've been talking about this for a long time. So. Enjoy. Hearing all the comments. Thank you for the reports, gentlemen, and all the work you've done on this. And making us be good little, good little people of Galt and do our part in this great state. I say that with a lot of sarcasm, but anyways.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've got two requests. The first is, I'm looking for direction to bring this item back to your September seventh. Meeting. And the second is. If all the council members can keep their packet, so we don't have to reprint out all these documents again.
Is there a consensus amongst the council that bringing this back as it's been presented to us so far is?
Yes.
Fine, okay.
I'm agree.
All right.
Yeah, we really got a choice.
Exactly. Yeah, with our arms twisted, it's a yes.
We will get this in back in the newspaper so that it's a publicly noticed meeting and we'll be bringing back the housing element, the environmental document. For you to to approve. And if any council members have any questions as you're reviewing this, please let me know.
All right.
And also, if we know, if we know property owners that want to do something different, send them Craig's way so he can keep a running list.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone involved. Appreciate you.
Great. Bye bye.
All right. Is there any, is there any public comment on this particular item, Ms. Huber?
No written comment.
Ms. Roderick, or do we have any hands raised online?
I have no hands raised online.
All right, moving on then. Next item is item H, our regular calendar from our city manager's office is going to be our coronavirus COVID nineteen update from our city manager, Mr. Heinz. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, very good. So this is the latest information regarding the cases in Sacramento County. And the cases in the city of Galt. As as you can see, the cases in Sacramento County have grown by six percent. Or almost seventy five hundred cases countywide. The number of deaths have increased by thirty eight in Sacramento County. The number of cases in our city of Galt or in our zip code of Galt. Is one hundred and fifty four cases. So we've got quite a increase in caseload. That's about five percent. And the number of deaths has increased by one. And and all of these have measured since our last council meeting on August third. Sacramento County's daily cases. So back on the week of July first, twenty twenty one. There was the caseload was seven point two cases per one hundred thousand residents. As of today, that caseload is now thirty per one hundred thousand residents. So you can see there's tremendous growth there. Hospitalizations, similar story. Sixty patients on June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. We're now dealing with four hundred and fourteen patients as of today. The variant, the Delta variant, is responsible for eighty to ninety percent of the cases in California currently. Sixty four percent of all eligible Californians are fully vaccinated. Ten point two percent are partially vaccinated. So we're making progress there. Forty nine point eight of all eligible Sacramento County residents are fully vaccinated. And here's the best news of the night, folks. Fifty one percent of all eligible residents in Galt have been fully vaccinated. So we're happy to see that Sacramento County dashboard has been updated to include full vaccinations by city. So as you recall, during our prior meetings, we were hovering right around forty percent. Of the folks who are partially vaccinated. So it's great that the county has updated their metrics. And our folks have responded and fifty one percent of our folks are now fully vaccinated. The city continues to administer the COVID nineteen rapid antigen test every Thursday. At the Parks and Recreation Offices. Test results are available within fifteen minutes. No appointment necessary. Testing available on Thursday, seven AM to twelve PM. And due to the high testing numbers, the testing location has been moved to the Tribola Center. Beginning Thursday, August twenty, will be moved to the Tribola Center beginning Thursday, August twenty six. Testing locations can also be found region wide at the. URL at the bottom of the page, and that's the Sacramento County vaccine URL. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for COVID nineteen for this week.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on this particular item, Ms. Huber?
No written comment.
What about hands raised online, Rose?
No attendees hands raised online.
Okay, Mr. Vanderburg, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Heinz, you mentioned that testing is up. Do you know the percentage? Are we testing it two, three hundred percent more, twenty percent more?
I don't have those numbers, council member.
Okay, do you know?
Parks Director Solis may have some information for you.
I I can give you some numbers from back in July at our low, we were at, we had six tests. And then I think. Yeah, per week. And then last week, I believe we were close to a hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy, okay. Has anybody, have you heard of any discussion about tests for antibodies?
They have not come through on any of the meetings I've been.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Just have your hand up, though. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening, Tina?
That's the seeking.
All right. Moving on to item J, City Clerk's Report. Our first item tonight is going to be the reappointment to Sacramento Environmental Commission. Our candidate to reappoint is Mr. Tom Malsen. Tina, you have a report for us?
Yes, so the item is reappointment to the Sacramento Environmental Commission. Yes, so the item is reappointment to the Sacramento Environmental Commission. Uh, the term of the Folsom, Ileton and Galt City Council-appointed seat on the Sacramento Environmental Commission ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Thomas Malsen was nominated by the Galt City Council in December twenty eighteen and ratified by Folsom and Ileton City Councils in April twenty twenty. Mr. Malsen has expressed interest in being reappointed to the commission. Folsom and Ileton have also advertised and, um, waiting on appointments on their end. If the appointment is approved tonight, it will also need approval by the Folsom and Ileton City Councils. Are there any questions?
Has a question?
Yeah, considering the information that I assume everybody received, uh, about Mr. Malsen, I was curious if the council would prefer to table this matter until maybe more research and verification can be done, considering the information we were given.
Any comments on that? On Mr. Vandenberg's comment? Does anybody else have an interest in tabling this item or?
I would also like to table to the next council meeting.
Okay. Um, I mean, I I think in light of the information that's been brought forward, I think it it would be our due diligence to, um, Mr. Lozano, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you mid-sentence. I just have a hard time clicking this thing sometimes. Um, I I I I think in all fairness, um, we need to at least give a a headline or headline and a little blurb about the information, uh, because this is a public meeting and we have an agendized item. I don't, I don't have an inch, an an issue with, um, uh, delaying it if it's not going to cause a problem. Well, I I don't have a problem delaying, uh, and and looking into the matter further.
I wasn't sure how to, excuse me, I'm so, I wasn't sure how to frame it because I didn't want to.
Uh, like, very inaccurate statements.
Yeah, I can, I can make comment, Jay. Um, it was brought to the council's attention, um, of a concern of regarding a social media post by the candidate and, um, the discussion was, um, about, uh, you know, with representatives, or if people were representing the city on commissions and committees and, um, boards that we appoint, um, that there's a certain level of standards, um, and, um, uh, behavior that we would expect as representatives of Galt. And so there was, there was some concern about something that was posted. And so there was, I think it, it was brought to us last minute. So I think that the council, um, I just feel due diligence would would say that we look into this a little further, just make sure there's merit or there's anything to it. Um, so I think tabling it, as long as like Mr. Lozano said, uh, does not disrupt any business that they would be doing, um, maybe we can put it on the next meeting, um, pending what, uh, we, does that sound reasonable, Mr. Heinz?
Yes, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. Well, I think there's, uh, at least a majority, uh, even with, uh, not Mr. Papano out, but I think we have a majority consensus that we would table the item, uh, to do some further. Unless you wanted to make a comment, Mr. Papano, I don't want to leave you out of the the decision here, but.
I just, uh, thought maybe we should clarify what our further action is going to be. What's our, what's our research going to be?
Well, I think, I think, uh, me personally, again, I I was only able to look at it briefly, but I think that, um, again, I, you know, social media is is a minefield and, uh, but I think, uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, you know, the, I just want to make sure that the people that we appoint to the positions and represent the city are going to, uh, um, act professional and represent the city as we would want us to be represented, not just on official capacity, but outside of those parameters. I am a big proponent of free speech, um, but with that being said, but I do think that, uh, you know, that there are other guidelines that had to be considered when you're, um, being asked to do stuff, so that, that's just my feeling. I think we could easily look into it and see how the council feels.
Now, that, that, and that, I have no problem with it. That's my question is, who's going to look into it? I mean, have a plan as to, to who's going to check in this and maybe somebody should ask Mr. Malsen about it rather than opening this can for everybody to internet sleuth and try and figure something out and and blow this up.
Right, so.
Definitely, I just, sorry to cut you off, Mr. Heinz, absolutely, Mr. Malsen would be, we would reach out to Mr. Malsen and and engage him with that. I mean, there's no, no question, he deserves to be presented with whatever and he can give his side. So, Mr. Heinz, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that, um, I would reach out to Mr. Malsen and discuss this particular issue um, and try to, uh, come up with a, uh, the background on the issue and I'll send a memo to council um, and CC the city attorney and, uh, make sure the council has all the requisite background information. At that point in time, I will also, uh, let, um, uh, the gentleman know that there are standards that, uh, that, um, that are part of the expectation of appointees um, and commission and commissioners, um, committee members and commissioners, uh, that are appointed by this council. And, um, just to make sure, uh, that we're clear on the expectations. So I'll have a report for council, uh, before the next meeting if I can, uh, get a meeting with Mr. Malsen.
Okay, thank you, sir, for hearing that.
With that clarification, I have no problem tabling it.
So, do, do I have a motion? Since it's?
Yeah, do we need a motion and a vote to do that or just a consensus?
Motion.
So.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Have a vote, please.
Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papano?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Five zero. Do we have any public comment on this particular item before we move on to the next?
I have no written comment.
And I have no hands raised online.
Okay. All right, moving on to our item J two. The subject is League of California Cities Conference Designation of a Voting Delegate. Ms. Huber?
Okay, so the recommendation is to appoint a city council member voting delegate and up to two alternatives if desired, al-alternates if desired at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, September twenty-second through September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and receive the annual conference resolution packet and provide direction to the voting representative if desired. So the voting delegate can attend the entire conference, the twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth, or they can just, uh, attend the September twenty-fourth when the vote is taken. Uh, so you will need to decide who your delegate is if you want up to two alternatives. And, um, you also have, can provide direction regarding the two resolutions that were included in your packet.
Okay, um, well, I know that I was the, uh, I did this last year, I believe it was last year here before, I forget, but, um, it was a great experience, um, didn't really take a lot of time. Um, it's actually pretty interesting, so, I mean, I think it would be appropriate for someone else to do it this time. Uh, maybe one of our new council members. And again, it's, it's not, uh, it doesn't take a lot of time. You basically, um, represent Galt, uh, the League of Cities, they vote on some pretty, you know, good things. Um, and there's a good discussion, uh, you attend some, some, uh, some, uh, sessions on different things, I guess, if I remember, you can select which ones. Um, you can, I I chose which ones best worked for my schedule. Um, one of them was the social media, one was just very interesting, but, um, it's pretty fun, actually, it's pretty interesting. So I don't know if one of the new guys want to, uh, do this or if not, you know, one of our existing that hasn't done it yet.
I'd be willing to do it.
And I, let me, sorry, I should include that this year so far, it's in person, so far.
That was my next question.
Okay, well, Councilman Lozano and I and, uh, Vice Mayor Sandu, we did attend League of Cities in person. It was the three of us, right? Was that correct? Yeah, it was, it was a great experience. I I was, it was actually pretty fun. So if you're able to do it in person, that would be, would be nice, but if you're not, it's still a great experience. So, um, so are you fine with that, Councilor Papano? I know Jay jumped in there and.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I've got a schedule change that's unpredictable, so it wouldn't work for me.
All right, so do we need a, uh, motion to appoint him as, okay?
Yes.
Do I, do I have a motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Vandenberg as the League of Cities, League of California Cities, uh, voting delegate?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano, and I will second that. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Councilmember Papano?
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Hi.
Mayor Farmer?
Hi. Approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you, uh, have any public comment on that particular item, Ms. Huber?
No written comment.
Okay, anything online, Rose?
No, no, hands raised.
All right. All right, we'll move on to our next item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, our Parks Director Armando Solis will, um, elaborate on, um, the statements I'm about to make, but I wanted to make the public aware that we are providing entertainment, um, on Fridays and Saturdays. Um, we are still running the Friday Market down at the Old Galt down on Fourth Street. And so we invite you all to join us. We have a shuttle that circulates throughout the city on Friday nights and takes folks from the northeast sector of the city down to downtown and sort of rotates back to the northeast section. And there are a number of stops in between, so you are welcome to, uh, partake in the shuttle if you don't want to drive down to Fourth Street. Our, um, uh, attendance numbers have been low, uh, for the last couple of weeks and we are sort of determining whether or not to continue the shuttle. We'll have one more week of service and that'll sort of make or break the, um, uh, the, the decision as to whether we continue it. But I wanted to make sure that the public knew that that service was available in case you didn't want to, uh, come down to, uh, didn't want to drive down to the Friday Night Market. The other thing I wanted to remind everyone is on alternating Saturday nights, uh, we are running movies and concerts uh, down on the Galt Market property and on the Veterans Field property. And so there are entertainment opportunities for everyone on Fridays and Friday and Saturday nights. It's outdoors. Um, we ask that you, you know, um, observe the, uh, requirements that the county health officer has laid down. And as long as we're outdoors, um, uh, you know, things are a little safer. And so all of these events that I just explained are just all are all outdoors. And, um, I wanted to let the public know. And with that, I'll pass the baton over to Director Solis, our Parks and Rec Director.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Don Lorenzo, covered everything. I just wanted to go over a couple of things with you guys. Um, there were some social media posts about use of our fields. And, you know, there weren't, uh, it wasn't quite truthful. And so I shared this with our Parks and Rec Commission the other day and they found it quite interesting because they didn't realize exactly how many organizations and people use our fields here in the city of Galt. So I put together a, a chart for you. Let me see if I can get to it.
Mr. Solis, can I interrupt and just get a little bit of clarification? What do, what are we talking about here? What, what fields?
Um, so I'll go over those, uh, we're talking the Sports Complex, uh, Greer Middle School, the Basin, McCaffrey, Walker Park, those type of thing, those type of fields.
Okay.
So, I put together a list of what we traditionally use or people that have used in the past. We have fifteen organizations vying for field time. Um, a lot of them are at the same time. You have a lot of, um, competitive teams, so traditionally you'd have a soccer season, baseball season, but now these, these travel teams are going year-round. So we're trying to use, they're trying to use our fields. And I just wanted to give you kind of a glimpse here of exactly who's buying, vying for which fields.
Are you going to share a PowerPoint with us, sir?
I'm sorry, I thought I was sharing.
Okay.
I was going through my screens like, like everything here.
No problem, that's, that's why we're here to help.
How about now?
Uh, no.
No.
Rose, it's, it does he have, uh?
Yeah, I just gave him co-host permissions. Try again, Armando.
Little lights aren't twinkling, Clark.
There you go. There we go. Let me get back to, uh, so, these are, these are the organizations, the fifteen organizations that have historically used our fields. Um, you, you can see everything from baseball to soccer to rugby, cheerleading. Um, the schools actually use our fields also, the high schools and McCaffrey. And these are the fields that they're vying time for. You can see it's not as simple as, I want to use this field, let me use it. They're actually competing with other leagues too. And we do our best to try and accommodate all requests. But I, but when I have a request from an organization that has thirty kids versus an organization that has five hundred and sixty kids and they want equal playing time, we just can't do that, you know? This thirty-team organization wants three days a week where the five hundred and sixty-team organizer, or, uh, player, they need five days a week. So we try our best to get everybody in. Um, I just wanted to show you exactly how many people are looking to use our fields. Um, it, it's just an informational thing. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you about who and when are using our fields.
Armando, um, I, I don't remember the exact verbiage of the post. I, I, I did read it, but I think some of the mention was about that the school district was, was suddenly had changed their mind or policy or something about letting me use, which obviously wouldn't be under the city's control. Do you, do you remember what that was or?
Yeah, they basically, it made it sound like we had control over this, the school district's fields and we don't. We have control over two fields. We have the Greer Basin and we have McCaffrey Middle School. Uh, those become city parks after school's out and after school, uh, uses their, their fields. So that's when, those are the only two that we can schedule anything on.
Uh, Councilman Lozano, you have, uh, your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I've, I, I, I've actually had to deal with this at one point in my life. Um, and, and I'd be happy to sit down with, uh, Mr. Heinz and or Mr. Solis to, to kind of bounce some ideas off. I, I think the general concept should be what, what is the primary, first of all, um, you know, deciding which are recreational, uh, teams and or leagues and which are competitive. Um, and then determining what, what each of their primary seasons are and then kind of go from there and, 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 uh, you know, maybe bring these groups together and say, hey, here, here are the amount of fields we have. Um, you know, after the, after a joint use agreement is, is completed, uh, by, um, with the, with the school district, here's what we have available and, and have them pick in a, in an order or something to that effect, maybe. I, I don't know what the answer is specifically to this. That is a lot of organizations, but, uh, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I can, I can bring some, some documentation to help maybe outline it and it's not something we can do tomorrow. But as, uh, you know, a lot of these organizations already have their, their things planned out. But maybe we do this for the next, you know, next fiscal year or the next year. That, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This, this typically happens when we have a new turnover in boards, uh, new, uh, field coordinators. They really don't get, understand the why. We actually have a meeting set up with that organization tomorrow to go over everything, uh, just to reiterate what we've sent them over, uh, email. So we'll be meeting in person so we can actually talk about it, show them, go over this list and talk about what they've had traditionally in the past and what we're able to give them this year. So, uh, but thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I'll, I'll probably reach out to you, you and I can talk if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, you know, this is, it, it's, it's a system that, um, that from time to time has to be rebolstered. I mean, it's, uh, people have expectations and, and, and we don't always communicate, um, as, uh, you sports organizations and or, or whatever, we, we don't always communicate with, uh, everybody like we should. And so I, I, you know, I just think that, uh, there's an easy way to do it and, and, uh, not easy all the time, but, but certainly, uh, a, a fair way to do it if, if, uh, folks, um, want to work together even. want to work together even better, right? So, uh, and maybe it's bringing these, these groups together once a quarter.
Yeah.
Everybody in the same room and saying, hey, these fields are offline because we're, we're, you know, I, I don't know, uh, but we'll talk. Yeah, absolutely.
Were there any other questions before I go on?
Um, could you maybe shoot this to all of us in an email just so I can have, I can be armed with this information? Should people approach me? Because I do get approached by questions on some of this occasionally, so it would be helpful for me. Armando, that'd be great.
I'll have, I'll send it over to Tina. She can send it out to all the council members.
Thank you. Does any of the other council have a question on this particular item for, for Mr. Solis?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, uh, Armando, um, are you at the end of your presentation?
Uh, I was just gonna go over some events that you kind of went over.
No. So while we're, before you get to the events, I wanted to, uh, just seize on the opportunity here to remind and let folks know that we are actually looking at, um, a, the Walker Park Master Plan. We're actually in the process of phasing the construction of that master plan, and we're also in the process of pricing out, um, that master plan. So if we're able to actually bring Walker Park online, uh, consistent with what the master plan is, we'll end up with five diamonds. Uh, so hopefully that'll relieve some of the pressure on Armando and also provide some opportunities for these groups, uh, to, to have more facilities at their disposal. Walker Park will also have a number of other amenities, uh, once we, um, once we bring it online, if that's the desire of council. Uh, but I wanted to let everybody know that we're aware of this, this issue. We are taking steps to, uh, mitigate this as best we can, and we believe the Walker Park Master Plan is probably the best tool to mitigate this and also upgrade the experience, uh, softball experience for all of these groups. And, uh, so, uh, Director Solis, I just wanted to mention that.
All right. So I'm just gonna kind of go over what, uh, what we talked about earlier. We have our, uh, farmer's market, uh, our last farmer's market will be on Friday, August twenty-seventh. And there's a couple of things that we're adding. We're adding the, uh, fun kitty carnival rides, base painting and more. And we're gonna do a, have a back-to-school theme. We're gonna give out some free back, uh, back-to-school items while supplies last. So that's not this Friday. It's the following Friday. And then as we talked about, uh, the, the shuttle, uh, you see the, the stops here, and we are gonna give it one more week. Uh, we had nine people the first week, zero people the second week. So I'm hoping people take, uh, take advantage of this and, uh, come downtown and on our, uh, dime. Then we have our, our summer concert series. Uh, Gary Bohannon and the Bad Habits will be performing this Saturday at, uh, Veterans Field. And then here's the schedule for the remaining three. And then we had our drive-in this weekend, uh, where there were some technical issues. Um, when, uh, kind of, uh, wouldn't cooperate and blew down the screen, and we weren't able to hold our movie. Uh, the, the screen's four stories tall and able to hold up to ten mile-per-hour winds, and they were just a little higher than that. So with that, um, I'm done. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Uh, I have a, I have a question, Armando, and, and again, I, I'm very happy you guys are doing all these events. I know some of them, it's gonna take a little time to get, you know, interest going and stuff. Um, you have to be patient, and, uh, people always go, I didn't know about that, when, when, you know, and so we have to, it takes time to get people out, you know, get the word around and such. But, um, regarding the farmer's market, I've had a bunch of people, you know, contact me lately, and they're like, you know, the farmer's market has been, you know, overall has been a great thing. Um, I think, you know, obviously, the days where it was really hot, the load, the attendance was lower and understandably so. But people have been asking, you know, why the city didn't consider running the farmer's market longer into the fall, like September and October, when we typically have fairly good weather, but it's a lot cooler and people are more apt to come out in the evening. So I'm just passing that question along to you. I don't have the answer to that, but, um...
We, we tried it last year, and it just seemed to really, really die in September. And so that's why we scaled it back through August this year.
Okay. So I know the heat's just been, uh, uh, it's been bad lately, and so it's just unfortunately, uh, you know, about seven o'clock, it starts to get hopping, and then it's like over in an hour because, uh, that's the cool time of the evening. So anyways, I just want to ask that question. So anybody else have any questions for Mr. Solis on these, any of these items? All right. Well, thank you for that presentation, sir. Mr. Hines?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Solis. Let's go with our, uh, the man of the hour, uh, Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
You're gonna say, were we doing our righteous brothers? On Friday? But that, that would bring out people to the farmer's market.
Oh, definitely.
So, no, nothing tonight. I just, I hear the frustration from the council. All I can say is on September seventh, you don't have to deal with it for another eight years. And that's it for me tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Director Hoffman. Let's go with Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, as we touched on earlier, as far as the groundwater sustainability plan. Uh, there are three workshops, technically four, uh, coming up. And the first one's gonna be next Thursday, the twenty-sixth, is a webinar-type of virtual, uh, workshop where they'll go over the plan, and the public review comment opens tomorrow. It will run through October twentieth. Uh, so you got a good amount of time to, to look at this thing. It is a big document. I'll, I'll forewarn you, uh, for anybody that's interested. Uh, but again, there will be a workshop, uh, virtual on the twenty-sixth. And then, uh, there's two scheduled, I think, for September sixteenth. One is, oh, let me just pause. The one on the twenty-sixth is gonna run from six-thirty PM to eight PM. Uh, so that's in the evening. And then there's two on, uh, they're targeting for September sixteenth. One would be in the afternoon from three-thirty to five, and then a second one from six-thirty to eight. And they're, uh, hoping that those will be in-person workshops. Uh, locations are still, uh, to be determined, but, uh, you can, uh, generally mark your calendars if you're interested in an in-person one, or if that, you know, afternoon timeframe might work better for you. That's, uh, that's, uh, an opportunity there. And then the last one would be on October sixth. At this point, they're thinking that will probably be a virtual one, uh, just kind of one last, uh, uh, chance, so to speak, as far as a public workshop. Again, the comment period runs through the twentieth of October though, so, so there's still a couple of weeks, uh, even after that last workshop. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about is, I know we've mentioned it a couple of times, uh, upcoming, is Cost Road, uh, that's, uh, we're looking at a closure of the road at the railroad crossing. Uh, and I don't have final dates yet, but it will likely be next week and a week after. Uh, we anticipate up to a two-week closure while the, uh, uh, developer's contractor, uh, is making the utility connections there. Um, and there'll be a, um, a detour as well, probably, uh, looking at, uh, Lincoln on the east side and then, uh, First Street, uh, to F Street on the, uh, west side. And then, uh, last thing, I just kind of wanted to give a, uh, uh, you know, shout out of appreciation to our streets crew. Uh, the last couple of weeks, they've just, uh, had a lot of, uh, unforeseen, uh, kind of urgent response-type, uh, uh, tasks to, uh, to handle, and they've handled it, uh, uh, you know, very adeptly. And, and, uh, we just really appreciate them being able to, uh, be so responsive and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, uh, quick to, uh, resolve the matters. So, uh, with that, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Director Selling. Let's go with Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening. I'm, just wanted briefly to touch on the C Street Enhancement Project. As many of you were, um, present during our July twenty-second workshop and walking tour, we've scheduled our second workshop. Um, this is actually going to be held on September the ninth, which is a Thursday evening, again, at Chavola, and we've pushed it back a little bit. It'll be, be starting at six o'clock. Um, this is going to be a workshop to present the designs, um, that we, uh, the, the designers are gonna be presenting the concepts that they've put together as a result of the feedback that was received during the workshop and walking tour. So those are going to be presented on Thursday, September ninth. We're gonna start pushing the advertisements out this week. Uh, we just got confirmation on the date, and I also wanted to mention that the results of the Open House and Walking Tour, there's a summary that was presented, um, and put together by the, um, consultant team and city staff. And so that summary is on the C Street Enhancement webpage, and we'll be pushing that out, um, through the newsletter this week. So our Connect with Gulp newsletter will go out Thursday, and, um, the link to the Open House and Walking Tour summary will be presented there. Trying to be as transparent as possible with the project and make sure that everybody's comments are captured and, um, part of the designs that are going to be, um, presented during the next meeting will really, um, kind of capture some of those comments. So wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that, and again, we'll start pushing that out and advertising them within the next week or so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Amy.
Amy. No problem.
All right. Let's go with, uh, Chief, uh, Richard Small.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, number one, and probably, um, most importantly, in light of the comments tonight, uh, I want to remind, uh, the public that, um, if there are, uh, traffic issues that you're seeing in real time, um, we ask you to contact us, uh, at the Police Department so that we can respond and hopefully, um, provide some enforcement. Um, if it's a, uh, situation that requires a nine-one-one call, feel free to do so. Um, if it's not, please use our non-emergency line. Also, uh, with the work, uh, that we've done with the, uh, Public Safety Committee, we also have other mechanisms to report non-emergency and ongoing traffic concerns. Uh, you can do so online, um, at gulppd.com. There's an online submission form. Additionally, we have a phone number, uh, dedicated, uh, exclusively to traffic concerns. That is two zero nine, three six six, seven zero six two. We also have an exclu, an email, uh, address used exclusively for, uh, traffic concerns as well. That is gpD dot traffic at gulppd dot com. So please, uh, let us know what's going on in the community so that we can respond appropriately. Uh, second, uh, we did have a slight delay in our body-worn camera, uh, program. Uh, the vendor had some shipping issues. Um, so our original plan was to, um, get everybody trained up and issue that equipment, uh, this last week. Uh, that was delayed, and we're looking at the, uh, twenty-third and twenty-fourth of August now. Uh, we've received that equipment. It's just a matter of having the vendor come out now and provide the necessary training. And finally, um, I also want to recognize my staff as well. Um, there have, uh, been several, outside agency requests for assistance, mutual aid requests, as a result of the numerous fires in Northern California. And, uh, our staff, uh, in addition to working the overtime, um, that's part of any police department internally, um, they've signed up, um, and, and, and done, uh, uh, above and beyond what an agency our size would normally do uh, to assist, uh, those in need in our region as a result of the fires. So with that, uh, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Hines.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Uh, let's go with City Attorney Frank Splendorio.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Council, I have nothing to report. I'll turn it back to you, uh, Lorenzo.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, let's go with Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Stein.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, I just thought I would remind everyone that we have several job openings right now posted on our HR website. Um, we're recruiting for police officer, police dispatcher. Um, we've got our equipment mechanic position open right now. That's in Public Works. Um, we also have janitorial positions open in Public Works. Um, in our Parks and Recreation Department, we have several part-time and temporary job openings. Um, we're looking for an office assistant for the market, um, recreation workers for the market. Um, we are also, um, searching for recreation workers to work, work in our ACES and SOAR program, and that's in community service and the childcare programs. Um, and we also have our lifeguard positions posted as well. Um, so if you know of anyone who's qualified and interested, please direct them to our HR website off of the city's webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Van Stein. Um, City Clerk Tina Hubert.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Executive Assistant Rose Rodacker.
I have nothing for the group tonight. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Mayor, before I conclude my comments, I also wanted to, uh, send, uh, a big thank you to the City of Gulp's Finance Department. Uh, we are in the process of recruiting a finance director, and that, that, that recruitment closes, I believe, this Friday. And we're also in the process of recruiting a, um, Budget and Revenue Manager, and we held interviews for that position today, and so I'll be finalizing that list, uh, most likely tomorrow. But as we, as we are recruiting to fill these key vacancies in the Finance Department, I've gotta send a commendation out to the General Ledger Team, the Payroll Team, Utility Billing, and also the Budgets Team. They continue to soldier on and to get the work of the people of Gulp, uh, are depending on the Finance Department to do. So I really wanted to make sure that I thank them publicly and let the council know that we've got a good group over there who continues to keep their, uh, noses to the grindstone to get this work done for the city. The other, um, entity I wanted to thank was Stephanie Van Stein and her team, because they are dealing with an unprecedented amount of recruitments right now, uh, due to the turnover in staff. And so Stephanie and her team have also soldiered on to, uh, get these things done that the city needs, needs done. So, uh, Stephanie, thank you for that. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna turn it back to you, but I, I wanted to make sure, um, that you all heard those comments from me about our, our administrative services groups.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we will now move on to our council comments, future agenda items. So we will start with... Sorry, I was just reading something here. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, uh, it's gonna be a very short, uh, uh, first of all, thank you for Mr. Hines and his team doing an excellent job, uh, good report especially. Thank you for Mr. Hoffman. Uh, this is a big agenda item from, working from long time, uh, housing element. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I also like to thank you, the public comment, uh, Tim Reed, safety concern. This is a big concern to me. I believe that every council member heard it. A big concern to all the council member and a big concern to the staff. The same thing I like. Thank you for Kim Morris, uh, her concern, and that's a big concern. I, I thank you for to give us a, uh, public comment. Uh, thank you. And that's, I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papano.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, take a minute to thank all of the people serving on our commissions and committees, um, and our directors who are coordinating that. And, uh, I noted tonight, we obviously had reports from Public Safety and Major R. We saw a lot of work from the Planning Commission and, uh, mention of, uh, Park and Rec's activity. And I, you know, it seems to me, I haven't been here long, you know, did some time on the Planning Commission, but that our commissions and committees are coming together and kind of streamlining and, uh, being, I, I think, quite productive. So I just wanted to, uh, thank not only those four, but all of our, uh, commissions and committees for their, their work and encourage the continued, uh, communication. That's all.
Absolutely. I agree completely. Councilmember Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to touch on public comments also from, uh, Ms. Morris and Mr. Reed. There are, all these things are quite concerning, and there are other areas that maybe haven't been mentioned, and some work and considerations done in, you know, the Cost Road area. Uh, I'd hope it results in some sort of action and resolution more than just, uh, a lot of discussion about statistics and, and things that we probably maybe should have kind of not do. Uh, I'd really like to see something done beyond that. I really appreciate everybody's efforts on the reports, and, huh, as Mr. Selling, uh, mentioned, that the hard work and, uh, difficult situations, and if we're not hearing about it on Facebook, people are certainly doing a good job. So thank you, everybody. The hard work and uh difficult situations, and if we're not hearing about it on Facebook, people are certainly doing a good job. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. Um, I just had a question, I guess, for Mr. Heinz, and it just kind of dawned on me a little bit ago. When we go back to um in-person meetings, is there a way to um explore. Here in our uh great year of twenty twenty-one, the, you know, year of technology. Um, explore the idea that we could still continue uh some online uh presence for our meetings, and I I know we've had some discussion about it. But I think it's important that we have this uh mode still available for folks to interact and and view. Uh, online and and uh make that kind of a staple of what we do moving into the future rather than temporarily.
We'll definitely look into that, Councilmember. Yeah, I I agree with you. It is, it, you know, if there's been one bright spot. And this last year and a half is the utilization of technology to continue to bring us all together and to inform. So I definitely agree with you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um, and then uh. Public Works staff, and and I don't know if this Mr. Selling was talking about this with the road crew. Uh, but it was, I was made aware of a situation. I did forward it on to Mr. Selling that uh there was a uh a leak in a water, uh a water line. And uh the resident was actually like, man, I called and they were there in ten minutes and had it fixed in forty-five. And. Uh, you know, we often don't see or hear about these things uh that are positive. Um, and and you know. Yeah, I'd love social media. I think it's a great platform, but I think it's also can be toxic. So uh, and so uh. But but to hear positive things come out of 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 different modes of communication is good. So I thought I would pass that on. Uh, to Mr. Selling, and and they did do an awesome job, you know, so. So, Mr. Solly, thank you again, and I hope that's what you were, I I hope that was what we referred to earlier. And then staff, thank you for answering all my crazy questions here lately. I've I've had, uh. I know I've taken up a lot of uh the city manager's time and uh getting clarification and trying to be proactive on a few things that are happening in the community and. Um, and and they're always uh, you know, responses are are back to me uh in a timely fashion and and. Y'all are doing a good job and 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 feel free to let me know if you're getting over overworked because I know I send a lot your way. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, on Thursday, we're having a Walker Park check exchange with Assemblyman Cooper. Um, that I plan on attending, and then also I plan on attending the um uh firefighter academy uh. Graduation Friday night uh up in Oak Grove, and hopefully that'll bring some new firefighters down here to our uh. Our city and it'll be fun time, I think. So that's all I have. I appreciate the time and thank you, staff, for all the reports. And again. I want to say ditto to what Mr. Sandy or Vice Mayor Sandy said about the public comment. Um, it is important, and uh, you know, we don't get a lot of it, uh but when we do, it is, it's it's uh safety. Certainly today, uh having a safety theme was real important, and I want to thank uh Mr. Reed for uh sending. Our sending the council while we're in the meeting here, uh a note uh outlining his entire um. His entire statement because he didn't realize what what portion he left off on. So thank you, Mr. Reed and Ms. Morris for uh for uh. Uh, express expression your your uh your concerns.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Vanderburg, you had something to add?
Yes, thank you. Um, because of the ongoing fires, uh, they're expecting. Particle. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Recommended the in, they're expecting basically ash in our area for the next couple of days. Make it brief. So that's how bad the fires are. It happened last year. So if you have people that are sensitive. Maybe not should consider not jogging, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks for the information. I just want to start off by saying, uh, yeah, thanks to staff. Thanks to Craig for all his hard work on the housing element, even though he knows. That um we're all um, you know, I I guess I'll speak for myself. I'm very frustrated with it. I think the entire council. Uh, you know, has um some frustrations with it, but you always make it very easy to understand. You take a really um. Easy approach to things, and so I thank you for that. Um, and thank you for always, uh, you know. Being so quick to address my questions and concerns. And uh and that goes for all the staff that I, you know, do interact with with questions and stuff. I know. Uh, Public Works and and Armando and um. Craig probably are the three that I interact with the most where I have questions from the community. I'll just sometimes I just don't want to bother. Um. Our city manager with some mundane little ant question. So I'll ask, and they're very, everybody's very fast. I mean, literally. You know, answer me back on a Saturday in an evening when you don't have to. And so I I really appreciate. Our success as council members and and things that I am able to do in the community for people when they ask, he's only gonna. Work with uh, you know, I'm only as good as the staff behind me that's able to do those things because I can't do it myself. So I appreciate all that. I want to. Uh, send a shout out to T J Goodati, who's now part of Community Development. He's on the Code Enforcement Team, looking forward to him doing some great work on that. Something that's near to my heart, and uh he's been great with PD for all those years, so I'm sure he'll be fabulous in that in his new role. And uh, just want to close off with thank you to the people that made public comment, like other council members said. Um, you know, we we hear there might be a hundred comments on social media about a particular topic, but we rarely have very much comment. Um, in a meeting, and so this is really can change can be made. And um. I know it's sometimes intimidating for people to come into a meeting or even come to a live meeting when we have those and speak, but. It it is, it it has a lot of weight to it. So I encourage people with their concerns. I mean, it's your community. So. We want to hear from you. We are here to serve you. We need to hear from you. So if you have concerns, reach out to us. Um, come to meetings. Uh, don't be afraid to comment. Uh, last but not least, um, you know, school's back in, so piggybacking on the big topic tonight with safety. Everybody, please be conscious of how you're driving out there. You know, we got kids walking to school. We got a lot of cars with kids being transported to and from school. The last thing we want to do is is have our kids return to school. Um, be scarred by a tragic accident. So please, everybody that is watching this. Slow down, talk to your kids who have driver's licenses, tell them, put the phones down, be safe, drive safe. And uh, with that, I think I will uh. Finish it off. So without further ado, we'll adjourn the meeting for this evening, eight fifty-eight P M. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.